I call the December 15, 2022, closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to read directions on how the public can participate this afternoon?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can access this meeting on Fullerton.legistar.com or expect on cable channel three and ATTU verse channel 99. The public can address city council here in person in the chambers or virtually by joining Zoom. To speak in person, please register at the city manager's office next to chambers and we'll call you to speak at the microphone. And if you would like to join via Zoom, the info is zoom.us/join, or you can call 1-669-900-9128, and Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797.
Very well, thank you for that. Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And we saw Councilmember Silva somewhere nearby.
We will now hear public comment on closed session items. Seeing none in chambers, we'll move over to Zoom.
You have one hand raised, and that is Jane Riefer.
Ms. Riefer, good evening.
You should be able to talk.
Yes, hello, thank you so much. I am interested in the item that I think you're discussing tonight on the property at 1747 West Commonwealth, near the old Streamline Modern Historic Property. Is that on the agenda tonight?
There's a right-of-way adjacent to it, yes.
Okay, great, so here are my comments. I understand that the city sold Grace Ministries triangular parcel some years ago, and so I can only imagine that this is somehow related to that. And my understanding is that along Commonwealth, there is this beautiful lush grove of trees. And I'm hoping that the city will not entertain selling this, the rest of the area away from public land. I think it's a wonderful public trust with these amazing mature trees. They were all planted at the same time as the historic Hunt Center across the street by Norton Simon. And they also are just in an unexpected delightfully, delightful glade of mature trees, including coastlive oaks, which are holding up the hillside and are, they should really be our city's native, our city's official native tree. But in any case, there are pecan trees, there are pine trees and so forth, and I hope that we can retain this for the public. I'll just leave it at that. I'd like to have it remain within the public trust and with public access, so thank you for that. I also would be curious to know, well, maybe I'll ask another time, but I'm wondering when we give comments during closed session, whether the public comment period is actually, has minutes taken for it? I'm just curious about that separately.
We'll certainly ask the, our Madam City Clerk. She's nodding her head in the affirmative, so I would venture to guess that that's a yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Again, with the, with the trees, I'm hoping that we could, since they are already part of city property, that they can remain city property for the entire public to enjoy. In South Fullerton, which as you know, has a lack of trees and open space. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom? Very well, are there any closed session announcements? Then we'll recess to closed session. Good afternoon, folks. I call the December 6, 2022, meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to read the instructions on how the public may participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can view this meeting here in council chambers or on any of our government access cable channels or at Fullerton.legistar.com. If the public wants to address city council, they can do so here in person in the chambers, and please register in the city manager's office next door so we can call you to speak. For those who want to speak via Zoom, you can go to zoom.us/join, or call 1-669-900-9128, and the Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and you can raise your hand in Zoom when you'd like to speak on an item.
Thank you for that. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Very well, if I can call on the Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd be kind enough as to give the invocation for this evening, I'd be grateful.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Please all bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we are very grateful that you extend your protective hand over all the residents in our city. As we near many of the holiest dates on our calendar, we are hopeful that you will guide us to make decisions, to allow unanimity of thought, and allow us to come together as a community. We beseech your mercy for those who require it, and we hope to have very congenial terms within our city throughout this, this season. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. If I may call on Councilmember Silva to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. My hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team of justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any closed session report?
No report this evening.
Very well, do any council members have any ex parte communications to report? I'll go to my left, go to my right, very well. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll go right to public comments. Madam City Clerk, who was our first public comment?
We have six people registered. I'll just call you all up, and whoever gets to the, well, we have seven now. Get the microphone first, can go ahead and start. Terry Thompson, Matthew Seltzer, Wadarek, Todd Harrison, Z.J. Hahn, Curtis Gamble, and Tanya McCrory. And you're welcome to line up on the wall here behind the microphone, and whoever is next in line can go next.
Mr. Harrison, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Todd Harrison. I'm one of the endangered residents of Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I read tonight's agenda this morning, and I was deeply, even bitterly disappointed. I'm not making light of any agenda item there. They all seem the normal sort of business of running this city. My issue is not with what is being done tonight, but what is not. Not a word about preventing further tax on the housing of Fullerton seniors and low income. Mr. Saunders' legal case against the state of California to overturn the law against his predatory rent increases continue. This city, this council, could stop his assault dead in its tracks by choosing to put similar safety measures in place for the rest of the mobile home parks in Fullerton. Those other parks are not trying to impose double-digit rent increase yet, so the park owner's rights would not be hurt. Not a word about steering Fullerton's policing towards the real needs of the city's residents. Sure, lots of cameras and patrols for the tax-rich downtown nightly entertainment, but little is done to protect the residents that are too advantaged, disadvantaged, to go out clubbing. I will give you two concrete examples how FPD-limited resources are not helping those in need. This Saturday, many, this last Saturday, many received their state of California $350 assistance debit cards. Every single mailbox in Rancho La Paz was opened by two thieves. They went through every street, all to the hundreds of houses, leaving a trail of empty mailboxes. Two people on skateboards had enough time to open every box while also checking for unlocked cars. The cameras where residents ourselves funded and put up show them doing so. With no patrols by security or police, the entire hour-plus it took them, but somewhere between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. Then there's the mess we have discussed before at the Costco intersection on Harbor. That continues. A lot could have been done to reduce the clogging of the corner, the hindered buses, the endangered pedestrians. The same is true of the speeding and accidents at Lemon and Cross Streets like Valencia. If only the police's effective traffic units, like the motorcycle officers that have recently come back, whose invisibility and ticketing is well-known for calming dangerous traffic, could spend more of their time on Harbor and Lemon. I'm not upset with the chief here or his department as a whole. They do what they can, but under the control of the city council, it's just not enough. Twice a month on Tuesdays, I have to pick and choose a specific pressing item to speak about here because there is so much not being addressed. It's way past time you paid attention to our real concerns over and above the routine business of Fullerton.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Next speaker is?
And whoever's closest to the microphone can come next.
Please, good evening.
Hi, I'm Matthew Seltzer, business owner. My partner and I, Terry Zadmoto, and we're opposed to the sale of the property at 212 East Santa Fe, how it's going to destroy our business, be unsafe for other residents in the community, closing down Santa Fe Avenue to build this monstrosity next to my business, business across the street, vibration issues we're going to have.
Sir, if you'd be kind enough, this is public comments for non-agendized items. If you don't mind waiting, sir, until that point, we'll make sure we get your objection on record, clearly. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much, the leadership of the Fullerton City Council. Permit me to start by saying this. The lead constitutional law scholars do recognize American Constitution as the best in the world, despite the challenges that it did not address the fundamental human rights, because they did not consider a black person. This is pursuant to the ruling which was made by the then Chief Justice on March 6, 1857, that a black person is just a mere property, but is not a full human being, and overruled the Missouri Compromise as unconstitutional. But other than that, the U.S. Constitution was recognized because of its strong checks and balance to enhance strong separation of power. This was all because of its chief architect was by the then James Madison. The reason why I say that, I want to appeal to the city council. We appreciate the work the police is doing. Police are doing a very monumental work to provide safety, but they need somebody who can check on them. On this regard, I feel appeal to the city council to reconsider of how they can establish an oversight independent body, like either commission or the board. City Council of Santa Ana has it, so also I feel city of Fullerton can also have it, because what happened to me if I can't reach the police chief, where the secretary overruled me that there is no, no need to meet the city council chief police, because he feel that what the police did to me was right. So I feel that we need to, need to get someone whom we can reach, like the one who heads the dependent, dependent police board. That's the only my request to the council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gamble, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, the veterans, and the low-income community. Tonight, this evening, once again, I would like to share with you my thoughts on the Fullerton homeless, the veterans, and the, and the low-income community. The Cash App Visa Card is a free customizable Visa debit card, which allows the Fullerton homeless, the veterans, and low-income community to pay for goods and services such as free gas cards, free, free OCTA bus passes, rent, apartments, hotel rooms, car vehicle homes, RV recreational vehicle homes, ADUs, accessory dwelling unit homes, tiny homes, and safe parking program. In 2016, the Legal Aid Society of Orange County settled a $1 million lawsuit against the city of Fullerton on behalf of the Fullerton homeless community. This was for the emergency shelter industrial buy right overlay zone near State College in Orange Door, right there at the Goodman Center. February 8, 2022, what I, what I need you to know, Michael Shawn Wright founded Wound Walk OC, which is an organization that runs on community support to help people living on the streets and who are dealing with illness, wounds, and trauma. Wright established with the help of the medical professionals, home, housing activists, social workers, city, city leaders, and the community to continue to help people living in the streets who are dealing with illness, wounds, and trauma. Fullerton Community Development Citizens Committee meeting on March 10, 2022. Wound Walk requested $28,360 for, for the, for the Fullerton Street Medical Program. They received around $25,000 in funding. Fullerton Observer, mid-November 2021, the city received $2 million grant for the homeless services. The city received $1,900,000 from the U.S. Department of Housing. American Rescue Act, called it HOME, HOME, ARP. The funds are meant to provide housing services and, and shelter to, for individuals experiencing homelessness and other vulnerable populations. The Fullerton Navigation Center, owned and operated by Elimination Foundation, has 150 20 of those shelter beds are for Fullerton residents, and they are at $80 per day for a total of $584,000, $584,000 a year with funding from the American Rescue Funds. On February 23, 2022, the city received $4 million in state funds to purchase the Fullerton Navigation Center on behalf of the homeless veterans and low-income community. On July 6, 2022, the city of Fullerton received over $5 million in state fund to revitalize the Hunt Branch Library, which could be used as a cold weather shelter slash navigation center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Z.J. Hahn, I see you next in line.
Good evening, Mr. Hahn.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Zara, Councilmember Silva, and Councilmember Dunlap. I want to also welcome our city department heads, who do a fantastic job, and our city staff, who are outstanding. My interest to speak is that I want Fullerton to thrive and be able to have nice paved streets, have city streetlights that work, and to have our water pipes fixed and, and moving water throughout the city. All this comes down to budget, and I'm interested in planting seeds on how we can increase our city budget. And one of the things I noticed was Kimberly Clark and the 66 acres of land that was on. Now, what I really appreciate is, last time I spoke about this, the elected member in the center said that, did I realize that the city didn't own Kimberly Clark land? And I answered yes. So here's my question tonight. Do you realize that the Cerritos Auto Square was not owned by the city of Cerritos? It's called business. It's called collaboration. So the Cerritos Auto Square is only 8.5 acres. If we took that land at Kimberly Clark and you wanted to, oh, and the other thing that was brought up by the elected member in the center is that he wasn't around when this was done, but I have noticed since that there are members on this council who were around in 2018 when this was done. So maybe it's their turn to step up to the plate and do some responding. I also noticed, I was appreciative, the mayor talked about mall cities, and mall cities have a bigger tax base and they're able to do more. So this business idea is not foreign to at least the elected man in the center there. But if you took this 66 acres and you just took a quarter of it, 13 acres, you'd be bigger than the Cerritos Auto Square. And again, we have these cities around us that don't have no automobile dealer, malls, Diamond Bar, Pomona, Walnut, Roland Heights, hacienda Heights, La Puente, Puente Hills, La Marada, Yorba Linda, Whittier, Brea, Anaheim, Lohabra, Chino Hills, Orange, Stanton, Placentia, Cypress, and Garden Grove. 1.8 million people. You're in the part of the city where Kimberly Clark is, where there's very little housing. You have two major thoroughfares, the 91 freeway, which is an east and west thoroughfare, and the 57 that's north and south. Ideal place for an auto mall. Cerritos Auto Mall brings in approximately $12 to $20 million a year on auto sales, direct taxes to the city. We as a city and a government, if we want to have our streets paved, if we want to open the Hunt Library and have an example of something beautiful, we need to start planting seeds to attract business that has a huge tax base, so that we have $12 or $15 million that we can make our city the great city that it has once, was once. And, and so I just, I just plant these seeds to this council, that we start looking at things that can bring us money.
Thank you.
Go Titans, go Hornets.
Next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name's Tanya McCrory, Fullerton resident. I just wanted to second what this man said earlier about a police citizens oversight committee. I know that really good, dedicated people have worked on this for many years, decades, and it's always been rejected. And I completely understand why. I'm sure the police department does not want to feel like people are looking over their shoulder and criticizing. But I think there's a way that we could do this that would actually support and enrich the police department as much as assure and create better transparency for the community. If we could somehow truly consider an independent citizens committee, I know there are people willing to do this and have put forward, and I can actually bring the paperwork to council next time, past, past proposals, but I think it would be wonderful all around, for the police and for the citizens. And then Chief Dunn, I was hoping that you would talk to Letty, Letitia, and see if we can't get the 10-week citizens police workshop going. My husband and I were signed up for it. We were so looking forward to it, and then COVID hit. So I know quite a few people are ready to go, if you are, and we'd love it. We would absolutely love it. Lastly, I just want to say congratulations to the people who won their city council elections. Even if I don't always fully support your views, I do really appreciate the service that all of you give. I know it takes a lot to run a campaign, and it takes a lot of courage, so congratulations to those who won, and I hope this is going to be a great council that, that puts aside differences and really looks towards the benefit of the people of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have two more speakers in the system, Terry Thompson and Eve Lucas.
Okay. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Anjali Tapadia. I just wanted, I, I just arrived, so I apologize if this is redundant. I just wanted to request to pull item seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Eve Lucas. Hello, Mayor. I've been here before with the same situation. I came here, basically, I've been in a program for homeless for four years now, and I'm just looking for an advocate that will help me in my situation. I've been trying to go forward in life. I've been trying to work. I've had a job, been through several of them, because I can't hold a job, because of my, my housing situation. I've been just looking for an advocate. My program does, has workers and stuff. I've never had anyone to help me, back me up, to go forward in life. I've been through horrific situations in my housing situation. I just want to look for my own place so I can move on in life. I just had a job for seven months, and I couldn't hold my job because of my housing situation and what I've been going through. I'm just looking for someone to help me be able to go forward in life and get, get my, my place and work, pay rent, and do what I need to do, and I just need a direction, someone to back me up and just help me go there, so I can keep my jobs. And now they laid me off, or they fired me at the holidays, and now I have no work because of, I can't, my situation's at home, been so horrific that I can't even take it to work with me, put it that way. And I love my, I love my jobs. What I'm saying is, I just need someone, if somebody here, anybody could help me, advocate me, and helping the right person that wants the help, instead of helping the people that don't do anything and enabling them, letting these people that don't want homes. I lost my home, and I was homeless for six years. And I've been trying to go forward, get to my daughter, have my daughter come home to me, and have my own place, and not have to deal with the things I've been going through anyways. And they've been helping, enabling the people that don't want the help, and they haven't been helping me at all. I just need someone, an advocate, anybody, just help me go forward in life. Now I'm at the bottom again. I don't know if it makes any sense.
Why don't, why don't you leave your name and contact information with the city clerk, and let's, let's make sure we, we.
I really appreciate it.
We do what we can for you, all right?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Next speaker? Or is that?
We have one more speaker online.
Okay, go ahead.
Kayla Sato, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, Kayla Sato, she made the rounds with Orange County Justice. Just wanted to echo some of the support for the police oversight commission that has been expressed by at least a few speakers earlier. I don't think that it's right that communities like Rancho La Paz are being left alone with all of this, while some other communities are overpoliced and have people murdered in their communities. I don't think, like Hector, I don't think that this sort of situation is right, and I think that in order to bridge some of the relationships between the police and the residents of Fullerton, that we should have a police oversight commission to see what's going on and to really reinforce the good policing initiatives that have been put forth by a lot of data. And I think that a police oversight commission could really be instrumental in doing something like that. And yeah, I just wanted to voice my support for that, so that we can have equity in regards to a lot of these issues, not only in overpolicing, but also having justice for communities like Rancho La Paz. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on to him, please. Very well, we'll bring this back to council. There are council reports. We'll go left to right. Councilmember Silva.
Just to echo your comments about, maybe we can get our homeless liaison or a person at, at the office that can help with the housing issue, and other than that, I'm good. I'll save it for the, the next one.
You got it, sir. Councilmember Dunlap?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations on the 48 to 45 victory. It might not be the resounding 62 to 33 victory that my Bruins pulled off last year.
Indeed.
But I do have to say that, I think for the first time ever, I rooted for the Trojans in the Pac-12 championship game, and unfortunately, they let me down. But anyway.
We'll make sure we make it a one-time thing, sir.
Yeah.
Councilmember Zara, anything, sir, this evening to report?
No, I just wanted to, to thank our museum and, and staff for putting together a wonderful winter market and tree lighting. We appreciate all their work, and the museum really, staff, board, and volunteers all worked really hard to put it together, and all the sponsors as well of this. And a special shout-out to our Parks and Rec and Public Works as well. Thanks.
Very well, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Zara took my report this evening. Nothing further.
All right. You know, I did want to announce to everyone that the city of Fullerton received an award from the American Public Works Association, along with some members of our staff and the city manager, accepted that award in Lakewood this afternoon. Necessity is the mother of invention, so when you are in extraordinary drought conditions like we are, placing the cost of doing business on the backs of water repairs is not an option. So being a great steward to our vast underground supply is essential. But the city of Fullerton is not without its partners. I want to make sure that we thank Water Resources Partners, the Orange County Water District, of which Mayor Pro Tem is our board member representative, and the Metropolitan Water District. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank the staff of the city of Fullerton, who have accepted the steep challenge of modernizing one of the oldest cities in Orange County. I want to thank, again, our city manager, our Public Works Director, Ms. Meg McWade, and even Stephen and Yvette were there. So congratulations to the city of Fullerton, congratulations to our staff. It's a big deal, all right? We'll move on to the consent calendar, because we don't have any appointments this evening. If there was a request by the member of the public to pull seven, is there a council member here that was willing to do that? If so, I'd seek the approval of the balance.
I'd move the balance.
Oh, yeah, I'll pull seven.
Very well. Is there a second on the balance? Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And we'll go back to seven at the conclusion of business today, if that's all right. But we are now on to a public hearing item. It's an appeal of conditional use permit at 120 West Wilshire Avenue, and I will ask our planning manager, Mr. Schaefer, to give our presentation this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to provide a brief presentation regarding the appeal for a condition use permit for the business at 120 West Wilshire Avenue. The property is located on the south side of Wilshire Avenue, west of Harbor Boulevard, and it's in the zone, central business district within the restaurant overlay zone. The applicant requested a new condition use permit to replace one that was previously approved in 2009, as per the request by the city. The applicant will not be changing the characteristics of the business, and the CUP includes the request to continue to operate the restaurant in outdoor patio with a current type 47 ABC license, which includes live entertainment and would include a live entertainment permit and security plan. In 2009, for some background, a previous business owner had received the condition use permit that specifically allowed the restaurant on the property to operate as an after-hours nightclub with a type 47 license and live entertainment. The current owner purchased the business in 2017 and has been operating with that condition use permit from 2009. It should be noted that when the new business owner purchased the property, the previous owner had conducted a lot of illegal construction that the current owner has pulled permits for and resolved. Police, code enforcement, and planning staff have randomly conducted inspections of the premises and found that the kitchen is functioning, and the menu is available at all times, and no violations were noted. Additionally, staff reached out to the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, who state that the current ABC type 47 license is in good standing. So the hours of operation, the hours of live entertainment are being modified with the approval of the current CUP. And just to, I can just briefly run down those hours. Tuesday, from 12 noon to 2:00 a.m., Thursday through Saturday, 12 noon through 2:00 a.m., and Sunday, 12 noon through 12:00 a.m. There's no proposed change to the layout of the facility. The applicant is basically, like I said, just requesting to trade in the new CUP for the one that was previously approved in 2009. With that, staff recommends that the city council uphold the planning commission approval for the request of the condition use permit. Should the city council approve the appeal, the previous resolution, PC 09-22, would still be in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, I just want to clarify a few things about the license itself. The 47 license is on-sale general eating place. It says unequivocally, must operate and maintain as a bona fide eating place. What do we say? Is this a, is this a question for the city attorney? What's a bona fide eating place? Describe that to me, if you would be kind of...
Well, if you don't mind, I actually talked to ABC a couple hours ago, and their definition is alcohol sales cannot exceed the sales of food.
So 50 plus one is what we're talking about, right?
Correct.
Great.
And they require that the applicant maintain, on a quarterly basis, the receipts. ABC has the ability to visit the site at any random time and ask the operator to provide those receipts.
Okay.
They've not really been enforcing that because of COVID, but that's what the state law states.
So then, does the enforcement fall back on us as a municipality in terms of granting this updated CUP? Are we at default now, the enforcers?
We are not the enforcers of the state law. If there's a violation that occurs, obviously, we'd pass it along to ABC, and they would enforce that and possibly revoke the type 47 license.
Understood. All right. Any other questions from members of council at this time? Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a similar question to that, which is about enforcement. You said if there is a violation, then we would refer to ABC, but how would we know if there's a violation if there's no inspection from our part? Because we're relying on ABC to begin with.
We have the condition use permit that we are enforcing for noise, any violation of the hours of the conduct of the patrons, conduct of staff. So we're enforcing that aspect of it regarding the operation of the alcohol license that is strictly ABC. If we do notice something, we would pass it along to ABC, and they would come out with inspectors.
All right. Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Silva or Dunlap, anything? Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem? All right, then we will get public comments on this item. Madam City Clerk, who is registered for public comment?
And would you also like to officially open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Tony Bouchala, Fullerton, I am the opponent here tonight, and I'd like to pass out something that I downloaded on the internet from Instagram and from Google. And this brought to, I was notified by the city about a public hearing for the conditional use permit, and it is because I own property two doors away from the Fullerton 120. So I looked into the, I looked into the issue of this business being what the staff called as an existing restaurant, and it struck me as being very odd because I own the property two doors away. I've been in downtown Fullerton for about the last 30 years, and I know this place. As a matter of fact, when it first opened, it was called Club Envy, and it did not have an outdoor patio. So that is, it's not true about saying that this was open in 2009 with an outdoor patio. That patio is recently put in place, and in fact, I'm going to be playing a video here pretty soon. But you can see from the hours of operation that I passed out on Instagram, hours of operation, bonda Thursday, 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Friday, Latin Fridays, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Saturdays, pedo Saturdays, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And if you go to Google, hours of operation, Monday closed, Tuesday closed, Wednesday closed, Thursday, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Friday, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. That, I've been over there. There's really no food. There's no, there is a kitchen in there, but there's, they're not offering food. I've been there. It's really strange to me to find out that they're calling it an existing restaurant because it's not. It's actually a nightclub. And I don't have a problem with nightclubs, but be, if you want to be a nightclub, apply for a nightclub permit, and there should be different conditions on people that want to run a nightclub. A restaurant is exactly what it is. It's a primarily, its primary purpose is, which is the sale of service of meals on-site to guests, which has suitable kitchen facilities containing the necessary appliances required for cooking unpackaged foods, not pretzels and peanuts, which complies with all the requirements of the Orange County Health Department related to food facilities. ABC's definition of on-sale general eating place authorizes the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on licensed premises, must operate and maintain the licensed premises as a bona fide eating place. This is not a bona fide eating place. Go there, you'll see. Must maintain suitable kitchen facilities and must actually, and must make actual and substantial sales of meals for consumption on the premises. Miners are allowed on the premises. Okay, so I'd like to know, you know, the staffs reported that they have 51% food versus 49% alcohol. I'd like to see where that, I'd like to see something that verifies that because I don't believe it. In closing, I'd like to go ahead and play a short video. It's just, it's going to touch on a subject of outdoor amplified music, which is a big issue, and it brings in a lot of fights and things of that nature in the downtown area. So can we please go ahead and play that? This is Friday night. Nobody on the patio, but it's blasting music. Now, go back to 2019.
There we go. How's that?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's Ted White.
Okay, good evening again. So we're here tonight to discuss one component of the downtown game plan, which is the reset of our downtown restaurant regulations, or actually, this applies citywide, excuse me. One thing that I do want to point out to you before I begin our discussion here is that we, and the commission is in receipt of the letter that was provided by Hammond's and Baldino LLP, attorneys at law, regarding the assertion about the proper noticing for the component of this item related to the downtown commercial noise zone. And it also speaks to the SEQA requirements or analysis that was done for that component of the proposed changes. Based on that, we received this today and was provided to you today, which I guess that was actually dated yesterday, I apologize. And in consultation with the city attorney's office, we are recommending that an abundance of caution, that we actually make no action on the downtown commercial noise zone tonight to allow us to bring that back to you with a more conservative approach to the noticing that would be done for that, and to give us a chance to make sure that we've, we're doing our due diligence in terms of what the SEQA is and other comments that we've also received from the, from the public. As you know, one of the changes that was made between the time that we took this forward in November and the time that we brought this to you now is to actually bifurcate and put the downtown commercial noise zone into its own resolution and its own action because we do know that it's a, it's a very, it's a very involved topic, and we do want to be cautious and make sure that we're giving not just due process, but also all the voices to be heard on that item. So at this point, our recommendation is that we would table that, I guess would be the proper term, any action on the second resolution relating to the downtown commercial noise zone. And therefore, my presentation is also reflective of that fact that we're not going to be discussing the downtown commercial noise zone and the changes in Chapter 1590 related to noise. And Ivy, if you, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
So that is staff's recommendation?
And based on that, I spoke with both the council and Mr. White in advance of this meeting, and if there's no concern from the commissioners, my plan would be to reopen public comment after this item if people want to talk about the noise issue since for the purpose of this meeting, I think the expectation is we're going to treat it as it wasn't properly agendized out of an abundance of caution. So that is my MO, and certainly, people will maybe comment on it during public comment, and we'll do with that as it comes up. But my plan is to reopen public comment after this item so that people can discuss that as they see fit.
So if the commission is agreeable, we'll move forward on this item as to everything except for the noise portion.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to clean that up. So this, this...
Okay, so we go to 2020.
With that, we'll go ahead and go to our first, our first item, which is a scheduled public hearing on Fullerton Municipal Code Amendments relating to noise regulations and standards. Staff has requested that we continue this item to date uncertain, I believe. Is that correct, Ms. Graham?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I guess we would need to take public comments on whether or not to continue it, so I'll do so at this time. Are there any ecomments on continuing this item?
Nothing on continuing the item.
Okay, and if there are any members of the public who are here with us this evening and would like to speak, now would be your time to come up. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, may I ask the reason for continuing the item?
There was a noticing problem.
It seems there's a noticing problem with the planning commission hearing, is that right, or with the city council?
Just a little bit of discrepancy in the noticing that was brought to our attention, and so we are just sort of out of abundance of caution, going to be re-noticing the item and then hearing it in January.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who was opposed? And that passes five to zero.
Okay. So, Club 120. So as you can see, the, as you can hear, the volume of the outdoor music is extremely loud, and we have tenants that live two doors away that can't sleep at night because of the loud music. And I go to a business next door to this 120. It's a club, it's called the 888 cigar lounge, and it's a really nice place, and I enjoy going there. Sometimes when you get there and they have the music playing so loud next door, the wall is literally shaking and the roof is shaking, and I just, again, I, you know, the downtown overlay district, the restaurant overlay district was created to allow for places to be restaurants and also to make food, excuse me, to sell alcohol and morph into a nightclub as the evening comes on, but I don't see that happening here. The big issue, again, is the, is the noise element. It's been continued for now about 10 years, and the city council needs to handle that. We need to have a noise ordinance that works for everybody. The downtown is zoned for commercial residential. If you, there you go.
We'll thank the appellant.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Is it appropriate?
Councilman, please.
On the video about the sound?
Yes.
I have two questions on that. The video on the sound, there is a bar next to it.
Yes.
That also had amplified, or music coming out.
Yes.
And how do we know this was from here and not the other one?
I did not take that video, but I was given it to, the video was given to me by my tenant, who couldn't sleep at night. He walked downstairs, and he heard the music coming from 120.
Okay.
If you want, we can go out there and look and see for yourself.
I'm not a clubgoer, but I'm happy to go out sometime, yeah, and see that. The other question I have is that in relation to this particular appeal, this is a question, actually, to the city attorney, is the sound a factor in this appeal?
I appear the answer is yes.
All right.
And is it?
Chris?
Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
So, under the current resolution, the one that was previously approved by the planning commission, condition number 18 states that ambient music is permitted to be played through house speakers at a volume wherein normal conversation is unimpeded and within any outdoor dining or patio areas.
So it is a condition?
Yes, sir.
To answer the councilman's question, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'd like to also point out, though, on the previous resolution, which is the one from 2009, has similar conditions of approval, and there's actually three conditions for that one.
Very well. Thank you. And then if we, if the applicant is here, we'd certainly give ample time to the applicant as well.
Can we have him read those three conditions, just to see what it was?
As soon as the applicant speaks, I'll, we'll have those conditions read, if you don't mind, sir. Good evening.
Hello, hi, Denise Casas. Okay, so I'd just like to address on a couple of things that were shown. For instance, he showed a video of the place. As you can see, when the video is being showed, the door is closed. So there is, on my area, we have Les Amis in the corner that plays outdoor music, then next door, there's a bar, and then we have Revolution, and we also have Zing's. So my doors remain closed, doors, their doors are not. So I keep my door closed, and previous to that, I have gotten my walls soundproof because I do have an escape room next door, and to respect them, I have soundproofed the walls. So if I were to close my door, a lot of that noise stays inside and not outside. So just like you had asked in the question, how do you know where the music is actually coming from? You know, I'm not the only one playing music there. We have an officer that comes every week, mainly there Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and they do go in to our place, do an inspection, make sure everyone is up to code, and if we are not, then we are given a violation. So we are being monitored every week by Cecilia. She's with the city to make sure that all of our businesses are compliant to what we need to be doing and compliant need to be doing and compliant to our conditions as well. And as far as, he did mention some information he got from Google. I don't use Google, so that's not going to be updated. The Instagram that he's on is dedicated to our nightlife, not to the whole place as well. That's just a nightlife Instagram.
Do you have an Instagram dedicated to the day life?
We have an Instagram dedicated to the, yes, we do.
Which one is it?
I don't have, I don't have that information.
Okay.
And like I, I'm keeping communication direct with Christine Hernandez. We are, we have changed our hours from what we have. We're opening up new hours and we're changing the restaurant and the nightlife hours as well, which we have not put in effect because due to the new CUP, we're trying to open up more hours for, during the daytime. So that's not updated there as well, but.
Any further questions?
Just to give a little of information on what the gentleman was giving.
And I have one more question. And could staff confirm that we do meet with, go and visit the business?
So we have the echo unit, which consists of code enforcement and the PD, and they do random inspections of the facilities. I personally did a random inspection. I didn't let them know. I showed up on a Wednesday night and I witnessed the operation. They were cooking food. When I was there, they were in the kitchen boiling and there was music playing, but it wasn't as loud as what that video.
Did you eat?
I didn't, no. I just, I just showed up and they were still cooking. They were boiling potatoes and cutting vegetables and things, so.
May I ask, what are some of the menu items that you have?
So just off the top of my head, we have appetizers, wings, nachos, chips. We have chicken, chicken tenders. And then moving on to like the dinner items, we have enchiladas, we have burritos, we have taco plates, we have chile relleno plates. So it's a, it's a Mexican restaurant.
Thank you. All right. If I may, while we have the applicant, please, please don't go. So your hours on your nightclub social media state unequivocally, basically these are nightclub hours, you're nine to two, 10 to two?
So yeah, those are the nightclub. To be honest with you, after COVID, I haven't updated any of those hours and because I am in the process.
So what are the updated hours, if I may?
So right now, we are open from 6:00 PM till 2:00 PM. So we open up for dinner and then we stay open till 2:00 AM. And then we're in the process of reopening. So we were open for lunch before we closed because it was slow. So with the new CUP, I plan to reopen for lunch again.
So.
We open for dinner and then some days, the weekends, we stay open till 2:00 AM.
Okay, so 6:00 PM, so effectively you're doing three hours of dinner before you swap over to a nightclub?
Correct.
And we're expecting that you'd have 50 plus 1% of food sales with three hours of dinnertime?
Well, right now, I've talked to ABC as well and they're not enforcing that. They're not enforcing the 50/50 sales.
Their enforcement doesn't dictate what the law states unequivocally. I'm not going to just skirt the law because they're not enforcing it, right? I mean, until recently, jaywalking was illegal in the state. So just because the law is the law, we are tasked with maintaining that law, even if it's not under our jurisdiction. There is a jurisdictional matter in that it's a change of your conditional use permit, correct? Okay.
Which is, and that's why with the new CUP, I have provided the hours that, the hours that we're changing and we will be open and we will be open more hours to be able to at one point convert more, being open, lunchtime being open more on the restaurant side.
Thank you.
So just to confirm, if I may?
Councilmember, please.
So on your new CUP, application says you'll be open from 12 to 2 for lunch, right, on Tuesday? And then 12 to 2, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then the evening hour, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM?
Correct.
Okay. And then the entertainment is there. So, so unless you're coming, I don't know, you're coming back to be in a restaurant, if I may?
So.
A pool restaurant, lunch and dinner?
So we are, with the new CUP as well, we are required to have food items. And we as an establishment have food till, up to 1:30 in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right then. And, okay, and then I guess this goes to staff, right? If they start closing down for lunch, because maybe the business isn't there, do they have to come back and adjust this CUP or is it void or is it continued?
No, it's only if I want to change my hours or I want to add in more hours, then I need to go back.
Okay, so if for some reason you've got a, let's say, your lunch hour is not happening, you want to, you have to, and you can't be open, then we can come back and hear it?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I do understand the struggles that you've been going through COVID. I know that.
Yeah. Let me also mention too, sorry for the interruption. I mean, if it's a Friday night and obviously business is not what it used to be after COVID and we are slow, we do close because it, you know, if there's no people coming in and stuff, we do close to cut our expenses.
All right. No, I was just going to say that during COVID, we did go run a lot of laws and we kind of looked the other way on a lot of, on a lot of things that the city did. But, all right, well, thank you. And then I guess so, if there's, I do want to ask about the noise conditions, but I'll wait till you're done.
All right.
And I do actually have a CUP. What happened was before COVID, the city did come and talk to us stating that they were presenting a new CUP. And if we wanted to comply and, you know, be in good standing with the city, they recommended for us to apply for the new CUP. So that's how we applied with the new CUP.
Do you have anything further you'd like to?
That would be, thank you.
May I ask just one?
Sure.
Further question? Mr. Mayor, sorry. Are you the sole owner? Are you the owner of the business?
Yes.
So, and then how many employees do you have?
Currently, we have seven.
Seven employees.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're, it's not a big business, so most of it, it's like I'm there a lot. It's owner operated.
Yeah. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Anything further from council? All right, very well. We will seek public comment.
Can we get that question answered before we go public comments about the noise, the previous conditions?
Thank you, councilman.
Yes, sir. So actually, on the new resolution, there's actually an additional condition it talks about. It says noise generated from the establishment shall not exceed the levels specified in chapter 15.90 of the Fullerton Municipal Code. So that's in the current, the new resolution. And if you go to the old resolution from 2009, there are three conditions. Condition number 20, all exterior doors and windows shall be closed during the hours of entertainment or amplified music, except to allow ingress or egress of patrons or in the case of emergencies. All exterior doors and windows shall provide an adequate acoustic barrier and shall not consist solely of a screen or ventilated security door. Condition 21, noise from the establishment shall not exceed a level that can be heard 50 feet from any exterior wall of the establishment or heard 50 feet from any boundary of an outside courtyard or patio area included within the limits of the lot or designated tenant area on which a business is located for a period of longer than five consecutive seconds. And then number three, condition number 22, amplified music and/or amplified entertainment shall not be permitted outdoors.
And how do those three compare to, you said with the new 15, chapter 1590?
Honestly, I'd have to, I'd have to review the code. When we came before the appeal, I was, I thought it was the kitchen issue. Now it's a noise issue, so I'd need more time to research that.
And, you know, and that's okay. And only because, yeah, we have been dealing with this noise issue for a long time and we've never dealt with it, I guess. So perhaps that could be the main issue that we could address, the council could address. And then it would mean we'd have to go out there and in essence, manage or supervise all those restaurants that are playing music. But all right, yeah, no, if I get at some point, if we could get the comparison, what are they now compared to what they were before? And perhaps the upcoming new council can take a crack of, on this noise issue. Thank you.
Very well, sir. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll now hear public comment on this matter. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Just curious if anyone here on council or anyone in the audience has eaten at this establishment, number one. And number two, from all accounts, it sounds like a nightclub to me, given the hours. And until we can, one of us has eaten there and had at least one menu item or had a meal there, I think to me, it sounds like a nightclub and nothing more. So, and as far as receipts, I think we should see receipts showing 51%, that it's, that it indeed does serve that much food. And it's only fair. I mean, we have enough noise, we have enough, plenty of nightclubs already. So if it's a legit food establishment, let's prove that to us and show us the menu and invite us down to eat at your establishment because we would like that. We welcome all businesses, but not ones that bend or break the rules. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, I just want to kind of second that. I think let's call a spade a spade. And if this is a nightclub, great, be a nightclub. Right now, it sounds like they're trying to add food to keep that license instead of get the proper license. But I also don't think we need a license for another nightclub. We are inundated. We have 80 bars in a four-block radius and it's made our downtown kind of, ugh, just for kids, really. And it's not really somewhere that I feel like I want to go and spend time. I find myself eating at Brea and other places because it's clean, it doesn't stink, it's not filthy, there's not vomit. So I think these are things we have to consider as a city. Two new bars just opened on Commonwealth and Harbor, including the guy who stole the sidewalk. And I just don't know if we need that much more noise and booze. And let's be a culture diverse city that does more than just bus in kids from Riverside to party. So also, I recently ran into a friend who I hadn't seen since college and she now sits on the board of ABC. She was appointed by then Governor Brown. And I told her we had 80 bars in a four-block radius. She's like, you need to contact ABC. That is not normal and that's not how, how did that happen? I said, I don't know. But it just seems like we're giving out these licenses. I know our city's broke, but there's got to be other ways besides for booze to fund our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have a different approach. I would just like city staff and the planning commission and council to tell the truth because I watched the planning commission and the lady who was sitting here, Christine, lied to planning commission not once, not twice, but thrice, saying that, oh no, they haven't had a live, they haven't done live entertainment since the lockdowns. Oh, really? Check their Instagram and check their Facebook. They had live entertainment the week of that planning commission meeting. Actually, four days ago, they announced they were having a DJ. One of the reasons why they were asking for the CUP change was so they could have, according to the staff, so they could have bottle service and a cover charge. They already offer bottle service. They did it four days ago. Again, you might not know about it, but Al Gore's internet allows you to search for these things. And you can go on Instagram and Facebook and look at the things these people are posting and find how much we're being lied to. They, it was very, very clear that, no, it was the previous owner that violated our code, the previous owner that violated everything. They've been operating as 120 Fullerton since at least 2018. So this idea that it's a new thing from 2021 that, again, staff said, abject lie. Time and time again, Commissioner Cox asked, so they don't have live entertainment? No. Indoors or outdoors? Nope. Absolute lie. So if you want to follow the rules, follow the rules. And if council doesn't think the rules apply, get rid of the rules because this nonsense where you keep them and only use them against certain people is not a good government system. If they were out of compliance, why was the police chief renewing the entertainment permit every year? When they were, when she said, the staffer, the echo unit, code enforcement, and planning department have verified there's no live entertainment. There was live entertainment four days ago. There was live entertainment a month ago. There was live entertainment a year and a half ago. It started in June 2021. So either everyone in this building is incompetent or they're lying and it needs to stop. So I say deny it until you actually get some truce and it goes in front of planning commission in an honest and objective way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gamble, good evening. Again.
Mr. Mayor, city council, Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, veterans, low income. I just want to share my thoughts, opinion of, as Fullerton as a whole. We, we may have disagreements about what is good, what is right, but I think what the local businesses are trying to do are, are they trying to, they're trying to entertain and let, for example, Cal State Fullerton students, let them come here and have a good time because they want to leave the campus. Disneyland, with all the tourists that come, people want to have places to go, nice places to go. And I say this also because I'm a veteran, I'm stationed on the USS Missouri Battleship down in Long Beach years ago, and been around the world twice. And when we go places and do things, even though here now we are arguing and debating, but when people come, they want nice things. They want to be able to do a variety of things. These are grown people, adults. You know, they party, you know, some from working because we have a lot of working people that come through on the Amtrak train. So to try to kind of do this thing like it's, like these are kids, I don't think you have to monitor every single little aspect of this because it is clubs, it is bars. I liked to party when I was young, you know, packing a date. And I want to give other people that same opportunity to, to party, to be able to come and have dinner and meet, do business and it's just a big variety of things. And we shouldn't take that away from the community because of all our little difference. As a matter of fact, again, I'll sit down, but I'm kind of like a referee. I see both sides. But at the same time, I think that, again, like the referee, we should be able to compromise and work together where there should be kind of both winners in a way. So I just like, I'm just trying to say something positive about the situation because downtown Fullerton, it is nice. It's the nicest thing ever, especially when you come from other places. So let's continue to do the right thing and build and work together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember-elect, good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember-elect Jose Trinidad-Casaguetta, good to see you all. I intended to come to congratulate the new council members for the new term, but since you're doing that next week, I've been hearing all the testimony from tonight's appeal. It took me five minutes to review the planning commission staff report, the, tonight's appeal staff report, and it's very clear that staff have followed the rules, gone through the process. And I don't think I need to rely on the use of high emotions or name-calling to present this information. It's written in front of you and it seems that the CUP applicant has done what she could to make it in this pandemic. As you may know, my family owns a restaurant in Anaheim and it's been very difficult throughout the pandemic. And now that we're in the winter seasons when normally there's less customers, less business, it seems like the applicant has done what she can. So award the CUP and deny the appeal. It's, this is a respectful process and you have all the information in front of you to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on Zoom? Seeing no more in chambers?
We have no comments on Zoom.
All right, we'll bring this back to council. You know, before the other council members weigh in, I'm a big fan of the duck test. You know, if it looks like a duck, swims like a duck, quacks like a duck, probably is a duck. In this particular case, probably is a nightclub. And I find myself not swayed right now that it won't be in the nearby future. I think the business model itself is concerning to me. And so these are certainly my concerns as we move forward. Any other council members with, any other comments?
Yeah, so, but I think that going forward, then we would have to shut down half those restaurant nightclubs because they're always in violation of something. And I think I do agree, we're going to enforce the rules, let's enforce them across the board. And if they're coming in, so I guess the question, so they're trying to get up to date with our new CUP, what happens if they just, if they wouldn't have done this, they stuck to their old permit?
They continue to operate under the old CUP.
And it would be the same thing, correct? I mean, what would?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, yes. But if we allow this one, then we, I think we have a little more bite to hold them accountable because with this one, they get the entertainment. them accountable because with this one, they get the entertainment permit at the discretion of the chief. Is that correct? And that's what we were, the chief of police, right? So they're out there looking to see if they entertain, if they're complying with the entertainment process. So I mean, I say moving forward, I mean, if, if we want to shut this down, then we got to shut down half the restaurants who are nightclubs, who, who the noise level's way out there. Or if we're just going to pick on one, well, then if you all want to pick on one, pick on one. But I think going forward, I would suggest let this go through and hold them to what they are signing. And at the same time, I will see if we can bring back and resolve that noise element, you know, the, the noise issue that we have. Because I, I have been out there and it is loud. And, and one of them was you couldn't hear the noise 50 feet away. But like I said, if, if you're on that area across the street, you can hear all those noises. So all those clubs would need to be shut down or the volume turned down. So what was it? What did he say? You can't hear the noise 50 feet away? Anyway, I wrote it down, but now I can't find it. Here it is. Yeah, 50 feet away. So, so I mean, and I think we were trying to get everyone on this new CUP to kind of make it consistent across downtown. Because right now we, we're not consistent. We've got, I think, what we had, a different agreement with every nightclub, every, every restaurant, every bar. It was something different. And we didn't have any way to, to, to enforce anything that was consistent. And so I think with this, we will allow us to be consistent. And again, the, I mean, the hours are here, they're stated. And then, and if we go back and they're not complying, then let's start closing down everyone who's not complying and not just them. I mean, if that's what we want to do. So, so I would say, you know, allow them to go through and hold them accountable. But at the same time, in parallel, let's figure out a noise ordinance. What do we want? What kind of noise levels do we want out there? And are we gonna, are we gonna want to bring in new requirements? And the other part is enforce them. Because we, we have not, we, and when I say Fullerton, and as long as I've been on council and prior council, I don't think we've been consistent with enforcing those CUP requirements that we've had. So, so with that, I would, you know, move to deny the appeal and then, and let's, but on a parallel track, figure out our noise ordinance.
Councilmember, please.
You know, I think some of the words that I heard from my fellow council member a minute ago, closing down businesses, shutting down businesses.
Yeah, that's, that's not what this is about. I think simply put, this is about enforcement and it's about upholding the rules and upholding the laws that are on the books. I think some of the things that I've heard in the course of this hearing tonight and in the course of reading the report, my other, you know, outside due diligence, social media posts and the internet, show that, you know, this, this particular applicant here is not necessarily following the rules. And if you tracked the policy framework that sort of, you know, put a lot of this in place with the whole CUP request, things of that nature, it was entirely incumbent upon self-policing or self-enforcement. Basically, a self-certification by a business operator that they were following the rules and that they were doing what, what's right, what they're supposed to be doing. And when I hear things like, well, you know, the ABC said they aren't, they aren't enforcing it, so we hadn't really been concerned about it. You know, almost as though, hey, there's this disregard for the rules and the policies that are in place simply because they're not being enforced. Well, that, that to me demonstrates that particular applicant can't be trusted to follow the rules on their own. And so as I look at the policy framework and understanding, you know, entitlements and the way, you know, the CUP being an entitlement, the way these things work, you know, that's why they call it an entitlement risk. You know, you take the risk by not following the rules and not following the law, that when you seek to get that entitlement, it could potentially be declined. And with what we've heard with respect to the noise and, and some of the other concerns, you know, I think that's all I needed to hear to know that, you know, this is, this is a nonstarter for me. So I'll, I'll be supporting the, you know, the appeal. And, you know, perhaps they can figure things out and perhaps there's, you know, an interest in the council supporting, I think, a bigger policy framework with respect to noise going forward. But, you know, clearly, this is not a, you know, this is not a one business issue. This is an issue that affects many in the downtown. And again, it's not about shutting down and closing because that's the last thing we want. You know, we want our small businesses to thrive, but we also need our small businesses to, you know, again, to follow the rules.
All right. Councilmembers, all, please.
I do have a question. If this is, if the appeal is upheld, what happens to the business?
I can answer that. The old CUP revert back.
And so they will continue operating?
Yes. It's a different process to terminate a CUP. You'd have to have a full hearing to terminate a CUP.
So the new CUP would allow them to open for lunch. The old CUP, they have later hours or they would start later. Basically, that's the difference.
The, I'm sorry, the, which one?
So the new CUP, the one that was just previously approved, that would allow them to open at lunchtime. If this, if this one is appealed and denied, then the old CUP, I believe their opening hours are at six, I think.
So, so for me, to me, it seems like if we uphold the appeal, we're almost doing the nightclub a favor. Because now they're just going to be continue operating, but they'll just be operating at night now. And so I think having the appeal, having them go on the new CUP would allow them to actually operate more daytime. So I, I, I'm not seeing what the benefit of, of having them, and they're not, it's not like they're going to close down, they're going to continue the same operations. So I'm not sure what the benefit of this appeal would be. Because now we're just forcing them to be only a nighttime activity based on the old. So I mean, if, if this council wishes to look further into the termination of the whole thing, that's, that's one other thing. But in front of us, it's a very specific thing. Do they continue operating on the old appeal? Which is only merely nighttime? Or do they continue operating on a new, on the new CUP provisions or measures? And that allows them to have more daytime activity? So to me, it seems like that's where we need to be going to, to actually solve this problem.
If, if I may for the council member, and let me ask staff. The new CUP affords them an opportunity to operate under the 47 type liquor license, which is 50 plus one food sales versus alcohol. Whereas their current CUP would technically, if they're a nightclub, they'd be a 48, right?
Actually, they're, they're, they're 47s for both.
It's 47s for both?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that there was a categorical difference.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify that we, we are actually doing the counter of what we're trying to achieve by denying them this new CUP. So if, if I just may finish. And, and I, I mean, happily to look at the noise, I would think there's, rather than complicate our life, and I, I think we should go on to the new CUP and then really look at our own enforcement and our enforcement mechanisms and how we're actually enforcing these and inspecting businesses on a regular basis. And maybe we can, we can come back and have a review of this in six months to see how they, they are complying. And maybe we can all have lunch there.
Is, is there a motion that you're seconding from either council?
I will second the motion of Councilman Silva, but I'd like to add that we would get an update in six months.
And if I may, before the mayor, Pro Tem and mayor go on, yeah, no, I wasn't all indicating that I want to shut down businesses, but if we're going to enforce these rules on one, then we got to enforce them on all. And that may lead to other businesses being shut down. If we deny the appeal, we are shutting down half of their business or lunch hour. So, I mean, the people that want to go with the appeal are saying, cut them off for lunch, reduce their hours and let them become a nightclub and under the same list of liquor license. So, so yeah, I mean, again, and do we know how many of the bar club establishments in that downtown have gone from the old to the new CUP? Do we have a estimate?
It was only a handful. So as you recall correctly, the city did allow, there was a grace period, I believe, of a year where the establishments were encouraged to apply for the new CUP at no cost.
Right.
And some took it, some didn't. And so this applicant did take that offer. I, I know like Fullerton Brewery didn't, they're under the old CUP.
And so, so the, the, I guess, would you say there, we, we have more leverage under the new CUP versus the old CUP?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so if we deny this, we're going to have less teeth, like I said, to go after them if they're not following what they've signed to. And so, yeah, no, and then, you know, mayor, I didn't, I mean, you, you, you know, you took my words and just did what everyone does, shut down businesses. No, I meant if they're not complying, we got to enforce our own, our own laws and it may lead to shutting down some of these businesses. By no means do I want to shut them down, but if we're going to do it one, we got to play fair across the board. So anyway, so, ma'am, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you.
Hey, actually, a question for staff because I would just like to understand something because it's, you know, looking at this, I guess, CUP that was issued in 2009 says here, it's the, what is it, after, or it's a restaurant with after dinner nightclub, live entertainment, full alcohol sales. Okay? The, and then, okay, in 2020, they brought it forward to, to like come under the new conditional, or new conditional use permit with, with, to be, or to coincide with FMC Chapter 1531. Is that, so that's the whole, I mean, that's, that's the mechanism that allows for the self-enforcement of noise regulations and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Right. It's in line with our current codes.
Gotcha. Okay.
And the reason there was a delay, as staff was reviewing that 2020 application, it was discovered there's a lot of building violations that had to be addressed. And the applicant had to work through those, get building permits, fix all that stuff. And then once all that stuff was closed out, then we moved forward with this application.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, anything, sir?
Yes. I do have a question of staff here in a moment, but I wanted to say that excessive noise anywhere in the city, there's a term for it. It's disturbing the peace. And when we allow liberally through CUPs for anyone to disturb the peace, we're actually legalizing that sort of a problem. What I heard a little bit ago is that we've blurred the line between nightclub and, and other forms more predominant restaurant businesses. So I would ask staff at this point, how many downtown businesses are classified currently as nightclubs? No, I was asking, how many downtown businesses are currently classified as nightclubs?
I'd have to look. I'm actually doing an analysis of ABC licenses right now and gathering information from Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. It's actually something I want to, it's been requested by the planning commission to do a study session to get a little more in depth on this whole license issue. So we're, we're going to, as staff, we're going to be looking at that a little more closely. Don't, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Yeah, if the food versus liquor sales are pretty much equivalent, I, I would think, is there some difference in operating hours then? Is that really what we're looking at?
No, sir.
So, you know, there's much been, many darts have been thrown at the number of nightclubs downtown and whether people are actually operating as a nightclub or a restaurant. And I do note that when the overlay district was first created, the idea was to have an environment for upscale dining. And so anyone down there who is disturbing the peace regularly, I'd like to see our rules and regulations and our enforcement try to end disturbing the peace. I know when I served on the planning commission, there was an effort to have amplified music outdoors. And luckily, we moved to prevent that. And I understand the operator here is trying to keep the doors closed and has said that insulation has been added to the inside to prevent disturbing the peace. So I guess that remains to be seen. But I, I'll go back to what Councilmember Silva said earlier too, that it's been long elusive, this noise ordinance and the ability to enforce evenly a layer of noise in the downtown area that we can all live with. And so that has been footballed ad infinitum. And so you're recommending at this point, Councilmember Silva, that we, we make it fair, that we be consistent. But what you're advocating is we're making it consistently bad. And I would love to see it improved. I think it would be, even for those who have declared themselves to be nightclubs, I'd like to see that level reduced as much as possible.
Can you elaborate on consistently bad? Because I, so my whole point was that if we're going to have a noise disturbing the peace, let's have that and enforce that so we're not skirting the laws, like, right? So if we do that, are we going to be making it worse, you're saying?
Well, yes, because we're just continuing and we're creating a CUP that they'll be able to rely on as a right of operation.
But, but even, even if we enforce or come up with a new noise ordinance, that's still going to be more chaos? Is that what you're saying?
Well, as we approve more and more actual functional nightclubs as opposed to dining establishments, yes.
Yeah, I mean, but with, with the new CUP, there, there are a lot to be dining. So this particular applicant is going from a nightclub, six to two to lunch, dinner and a nightclub. So I guess my whole point, my, my point was that if we are consistent and come up with a new noise ordinance, we can enforce that, stop disturbing the peace. And I know in my eyes, it would, it would, it would manage it a little better and it would be at discretion of the police department regarding the live entertainment permit.
Well, I'm very, I'm very, I think you've spoken probably enough to this issue at this point, but I would like to finish what I'm saying.
Okay, all right. No, fair enough because you, you were making a comment about being more chaotic.
Yeah, I know.
And you tried to clarify that.
Yeah, you addressed it. What, what I'd like to see is some progress in terms of why do we even classify one business as a nightclub and one as a restaurant if there's distinctively no difference between the two? So I'd like to see some truth in labeling, some truth from staff in terms of what's happening, some truth for all those who are tasked for enforcement that that's actually being done. And I'd like to see some proof that favorites aren't being played, that some people are shut down routinely for things that their neighbors are doing, but others are, you know, hey, let's, let's just give them a pass on this. And I do have trouble sometimes with the quality of information which is being provided by staff, in this case to the planning commission. I know my appointee to the planning commission felt like he was given very inadequate and misleading information when this item was brought up. So considering the way that this application has been handled from the beginning, it'd be very hard for me to ratify it at this point. Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, sir. The, I, I do want to point out something to the applicant, that you mentioned in your testimony that the code wasn't being enforced. And that would be concerning to me because if you feel as though it's not being enforced, so I shouldn't be honorable to it and hold myself to that. That the, the alcohol, the license wasn't being enforced. You mentioned that. Could you clarify that? I just want you to give you that opportunity.
So after COVID, there, we get, so we have Cecilia that comes out, like I said, every week, it's not just one day a week. She is there every single day, comes in our location, does an inspection, makes sure she has a little monitor that checks her music. After she's gone, we have police department that does, they do rounds throughout our parking lot, our parking structure every 30, I've, sometimes I've got them every 20 minutes, sometimes it's every 30, 40 minutes. So we are being closely watched. It's not like we get to do whatever we want. We don't.
So clarify the statement you made with regards to the enforcement when you said it wasn't, what wasn't being enforced?
So, no, so when I called ABC, they said, the, the rule is there, but due to COVID, we are not enforcing it unless it's like a major situation. So.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So, Councilmember?
And just real quick, I'm sorry, because I know he had mentioned with the hours and stuff. So I'm only speaking on my behalf. I don't know other places, but like our dinner and, so our full menu ends at nine. I still continue to serve food till 1:30 in the morning. So I just don't have three hour, I'm not just serving dinner or food from six till nine, I'm serving it all the way till 1:30 in the morning.
Understood.
If I can address that real quickly, I've heard from other operators that it is enforced that when there are hours of food service that they're not allowed to and they've been prevented from serving food beyond those hours. But that's never happened to you.
That's never happened to me.
See, again, consistency.
Understood.
But I do know that.
Quickly, sir, because, you know, there is a motion and a second on the table.
We are required to have a limited food menu.
All right. Very well. Thank you. Councilmember?
I, I just want to make sure, I mean, there are a couple of things here. One, our conversation went beyond what this is, which is just the appeal, it just going on from one CUP to the other CUP. from one CUP to the other CUP. Those rules, this council, back in, I forgot when, I think I was on council, I actually didn't vote for it, but we set those rules in the past. And so, we're, we're trying to bring into compliance on the, to as many businesses as possible. So this is one way of doing that. If we are now picking and choosing who we do allow to go on this new CUP or not, then now we're creating, we are creating biases here. Because the rules have been set in the past to say, here's the general rule, and now everybody needs to sort of slowly, gradually jump onto this. If we are, if we are upholding the appeal, we are now creating a bias. And, and we are now picking and choosing who we would do that to. My suggestion, again, it is creating, because it seems the big issue is enforcement that is on us. And if, if, I, I think what we need to be doing is actually enforcing what we said we were going to do. So let's allow this transition to happen. The applicant came in good faith to try to do this, and then it seems it just went unlike what she thought. So let's allow this transition and let's monitor it and give it a provisional six months, and we'll come back and, and allow it to, allow us to have another conversation about it.
Well, there's certainly a motion and a second on, on the floor right now.
And, and then, and on that provision, we did that for, for JP 23, we gave him six or nine months to comply.
Yeah.
All right. Very well.
Hold on, I'm not done yet. And, and so, I mean, yeah, we're going to enforce our laws. We haven't been enforcing our disturbing the peace laws. So we're going to call the restaurants out, let's call ourselves out. I mean, do we want to enforce?
This isn't a discussion, sir, about.
I know, but it's, I am, I am a council member, I have the right here. So it's my time to talk, so thank you.
Let, let's just be more productive in terms of our conversation, sir.
So anyway, so my point is, if we're going to enforce something, let's enforce it across the board. Let's not just say, oh, this one, yes, that one, no. I think Mr. Breschala, what I got from him, his main issue is that noise. It's not letting his renters sleep up there, it's causing noise across. And I think, you had come here once, Mr. Breschala, when you lived on Ash, three blocks away, and were complaining about the noise. And I think that's how we started into this noise ordinance conversation four or five years ago. If my memory is correct, so I think if we address that, that alleviates other items. So with that, if, if you're, are you allowing Mr. Ferguson to speak?
No.
Okay. I was saying, because then, because then we have to, then we have to allow every other speaker to speak twice.
Then staff are lying to you.
So if you go.
The type 47 has to be a bona fide establishment.
There's a second, and we will move forward accordingly.
All right.
Unless there's a substitute motion, we will move forward and call the vote. All right? There's a substitute motion. I will make it to deny this, or to deny the CUP and uphold the appeal.
I would second that.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
And this is on the substitute motion to accept the appeal. Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
So the.
And Mr. Mayor, with that, we will have to bring back next meeting, an adopted new resolution sustaining your decision this evening.
Very well, sir.
And then, just on that note, I'd also like to see if I can get a second to, to bring back the noise ordinance and start squaring that away so we can start enforcing.
I'll second that.
All right. And Councilmember Dunlap, we want to do a time certain or before a certain time, but be, bring it back before March? Would that be?
Definitely, yeah, I mean.
I mean, the sooner the better, right?
The issue is not, the issue is more staff and staff time, not, not, certainly not a council consideration.
So, so I'll amend the motion to bring back an ordinance before March 2023.
Very well. Staff has their direction. Next item is the abandonment regarding portions of Ellis Place East of Harbor Boulevard. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll close the public hearing. Did I do that? Thank you. The abandonment of Ellis Place East of Harbor Boulevard. We have City Engineer Stephen Vice to make the presentation.
Delegating.
Delegating, very well. Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Juan Svala, Principal Civil Engineer with Public Works Department. The item before you this evening is for the partial abandonment of Ellis Place between Harbor Boulevard and Pomona Avenue. To begin with, the abandonment in front of you today is connected to the Fox Block Development Project. The Fox Block Development Project is located at three primary sites. First is the Triangle Parcel located at the northeast corner of Harbor Boulevard and Ellis Place. Secondly, the existing Angelo and Vince's Restaurant, which is located on the south side of Ellis Place, just east of Harbor. And lastly, the parking lot located at the northwest corner of Pomona Avenue and Chapman Avenue. Next slide. From a project overview, what you're seeing is the full site plan that includes the three properties I just discussed. On October 26, 2022, City of Fullerton Planning Commission approved the major site plan that encompasses this area per Resolution Number PC-2022-24. In conjunction with the major site plan, Planning Commission also considered the partial abandonment of Ellis Place and recommended that City Council approve the partial abandonment of Ellis Place Street Right Of Way to allow an outdoor dining, gathering, and entertainment area between the new building on the Triangle Lot and the existing Angelo and Vince's Restaurant per Resolution Number PC-2022-27. In addition, on November 15, 2022, City Council adopted Resolution Number 2022-088 declaring its intention to hold a public hearing on December 6, which is today, to consider public testimony related to the proposed partial abandonment of Ellis Place. Notices for such hearing were posted as required by law. Next slide. The area in front of you illustrates approximate limits of the proposed Ellis Place Vacation, which is highlighted in green, in relationship to the Triangle Lot, which is highlighted in red. Next slide. The above photographs are different street views of the existing improvements along Harbor Boulevard and Ellis Place, fronting the proposed development and the proposed partial vacation of Ellis. The top two photographs are from Harbor Boulevard looking north and south directions, while the bottom two images are views from Ellis Place looking easterly and westerly. Next slide. This exhibit shows the street right of way proposed for abandonment, which is shaded in green. Interestingly enough, through title research, it was determined that the street segment shaded in red is a separate parcel owned and fee by the city slash successor agency, whereas an easement for public right of way was never dedicated through this parcel. These two areas combined will create the outdoor dining space between the Triangle Lot and the existing Angelo and Vince's Restaurant, proposed by the Fox Block Development Project. The city will receive a one-time payment of $75,000 for both the vacated portion of Ellis Place and the city-owned and fee street segment. The exhibit also shows the approximate limits of the proposed cul-de-sac at the end of Ellis Place, where a portion of these lots will need to be dedicated to the City of Fullerton, uh, portion of those lots will need to be dedicated to the City of Fullerton for public right of way purposes at a later time. Next slide. The two exhibits shown here are the street right of way segments proposed for abandonment, which are attached to the resolution along with the legal descriptions of these areas. Next slide. And here are just some project renderings of the proposed project by the Fox Block Development. Next slide. Here's another rendering, and this is looking into the portion of Ellis that would be abandoned for the outdoor dining area. Next slide. This is a closer look into the outdoor dining area. Next slide. This is a rendering from, looking from Ellis Place into what would be the cul-de-sac proposed by the project. Next slide. So staff reviewed the proposed partial abandonment of Ellis Place in conjunction with the major site plan and concluded that it has merit based on the following findings and conditions. The vehicular closure of Ellis Place East of Harbor will reduce the vehicular conflicts on Harbor Boulevard since it would eliminate left-term movements to and from Harbor Boulevard. The vehicular closure of Ellis Place will also enhance public safety. Also, as part of the Fox Block Development Project, the developer is conditioned to replace an existing crosswalk with a new two-stage crosswalk, thus improving pedestrian visibility and shortening the distance that pedestrians will be exposed to conflicting traffic movements. Also, it would not significantly impact the entrances and exits, exiting of properties along Ellis Place since the connection from Pomona Avenue will remain, and the two public alleys providing north-south connections to and from Chapman Avenue will also remain. Although the city will be abandoning the street right of way, City of Fullerton will reserve an easement for public service and public utilities purposes over, under, along, and across, and through the abandoned street segments. Also, pedestrian access through the vacated portion of Ellis Place should not be prohibited per Resolution PC-2022-24, Item 3, meaning that any security measures such as gates or other measures to secure the outdoor courtyard and dining areas during hours the development is closed shall be subject to review and approve, and, subject to review and approval of the Director of Community and Economic Development to ensure that public pedestrian access through the site is maintained. In addition, and lastly, the Fox Block Development Project will construct a new street cul-de-sac at the Ellis Place Terminus, resulting from the proposed partial street abandonment, which is subject to city review and approval as well. Next slide. With that, I would like to conclude this presentation, recommending council to approve the abandonment and vacation of a portion of Ellis Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members with questions? We'll go to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this matter? Seeing none in chambers, we'll go to Zoom. Please. Mr. Gamble. I advocate efficiency, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Curtis Gamble, activists, but homeless, veterans, low income. I just like to say, I support this project. And the reason, one of the reasons I support the project, again, because I like Fullerton. Fullerton is a very beautiful city, so this brings more beauty to the city. And again, I'm a former 14-year OCTA bus driver, so I used to pass by here all the time. So it's good to see this area improve. So I, again, I just want to say, I like this project, and it's time that we bought Fullerton up to date and stopped holding on to all the old things that was around when I first came here 25, 30 years ago, and to go ahead and make these improvements and make Fullerton a even better city. Thank you. I approve of this project again.
Thank you, sir. Any comments on Zoom?
We have two speakers on Zoom?
Please.
Jane Reifer, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much. Yes, I have two basic comments. The first one is just about aesthetics with the cul-de-sac that's going to result from the abandonment and vacation. And that is that they, it's a very suburban, modern look, which I think does not, is not proper for the historic assets that are to the south and even towards Fullerton High School and to the historic neighborhood to the north and the Natural Creek. I'd love to see if the city can do something that's a little less jarring to these older neighborhoods, kind of respecting the, the area with, it doesn't have to look old, it just needs to be classic and timeless rather than suburban intrusion in here. This might sound like it doesn't matter, but these are all historic assets, and we shouldn't drop something that looks alien to the area. So, secondly, I'm concerned that the city is selling a public asset without securing the property agreement for public passage. I do hear tonight that there is a, subject to a private consultation within the city that Gates Camp shut it off completely, but I really feel that the city should be maintaining a pedestrian easement. Right now, there are two sidewalks, or one and a half, you could say, and I'm just asking for one passage that will be dedicated to preserving this area and not physically dividing a community. This was not part of the CEQA discussion because the city chose to use an exemption as the CEQA choice. It's distressing to people who need public passage, the very young, the elderly, the poor, the disabled, and the disadvantaged who are on foot. I don't believe that the proper protections for this passage are in place. Also, I'm just finding out now about the difference in the APNs and so forth. I don't know why that wasn't relayed to me. Apparently, well, I would just have liked to know before tonight about this change. I didn't think I needed to look to do that research, and now it seems like there's something different than what we were talking about the last time this was heard. And I wish I had known about the new changes. I, I just don't feel that's fair that I was not notified of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Jensen Halstrom, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, City staff. I would like to direct your, your attention to a urban watershed study that was conducted by Cal Poly Pomona students back in 2010 that actually had considered a really interesting use for that property, for that triangle-shaped property off Ellis. And the idea was to remove the impermeable parking lot surface and create what is called an infiltration park, is essentially a pocket of habitat and open space in that area that would utilize an infiltration basin to treat and percolate stormwater runoff where there is a storm drain that, that takes runoff from some of the nearby residential property and street. And, and essentially use a bioswale to treat some of that, that stormwater through infiltration before it enters what actually should be referred to as Brea Creek. Unfortunately, in the presentation and in the plans, Brea Creek is referred to as a drainage channel, which is, you know, not that it's necessarily incorrect, but I think what kind of that undermines is the opportunities and possibilities for creating a cultural connection to our historic and largest waterway that passes through our downtown Fullerton. I mean, some cities have, you know, such as Pasadena have the Arroyo Seco, and these are areas that, you know, though have been urbanized, there have still been some beautification efforts, and there is a cultural connection that fosters a sense of appreciation. And I think unfortunately, the, the plan as it stands completely ignores the, the significance of Brea Creek and kind of, you know, plays it down more so as something just, you know, by the wayside. I, I think I would like to see something that would consider the potential for habitat and open space in that parcel that would create what the plan described as a pocket of habitat for animals, wildlife, and for people. Ultimately, this park would become an extension of the creek while providing a habitat, you know, for especially endangered wildlife species. And so, I'd just like to, to make that, that mention, that, that should be looked into. And, you know, the, there should be other uses for that property considered, including this idea for an infiltration park.
Thank you.
So please, consider that. Thank you.
No more speakers on Zoom.
Very well. If the applicant is here, welcome to give testimony since this is a public hearing. Seeing none, we will, I will close this public hearing, bring further discussion back to council. If there's no council members with any questions of our staff, I'll entertain a motion or discussion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the question.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Final regular scheduled item on the agenda today is the disposition and development agreement, the DDA, by and between the City of Fullerton and West Park Investments LLC and TA Partners for the sale of property located at 212 East Santa Fe Avenue in Fullerton, California. We will now hear from Director Thomas. Good evening again, Director.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Sanina Thomas. I'm the Intern Community and Economic Development Director. Before you today is the, for deliberation and decision is the disposition of a city-owned property, next slide, please, of 212. property, next slide, please, of two-one-two Santa Fe Avenue. It's located at the northeast corner of the train station or at the corner of Santa Fe and, uh, Pomona Avenue. The site is, we own two acres of this, um, lot. It's a, it's used as a surface parking lot. Uh, next slide, please. We entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement in two thousand and eighteen and to, um, as part of the surplus land act process, any municipalities that entered into an agreement prior to two thousand and nineteen have the ability to, uh, proceed with disposing the property under economic development purposes or other, um, as long as an exclusive negotiation agreement was in place, in which this case, we had one in two thousand and eighteen with Park West General Contractors and West Park LLC. That ENA expires at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. This slide really tells you a little bit about the surplus land act process if this was decided to not, uh, proceed tonight. We essentially have roughly about a year process of declaring the land surplus, um, issuing notice of availability, having affordability requirements on the site, but really to better understand what else could be on here. So you're roughly looking at about a year to year and a half process. Next slide, please. While evaluating what type of projects.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, um, may I just quickly, a year and a half process to just declare it?
So, no, no, we can declare the land surplus almost immediately. You can either go through a public process to better understand what you want to see on the site, but you can declare the site surplus, and then you would have to issue a notice of availability for sixty days.
Okay.
At which time, if there are any proposers, you would then go into good-fate negotiations for about ninety days.
Okay, thank you for that.
So you're specifying the entire process is?
Correct.
All right, very well.
As an option. The Fullerton Transit Center, uh, we do have a specific plan, um, in our downtown center, specifically in the transit center, and the goals there are really to, uh, ensure that the buildings, public space, streets, we're really creating a transit-oriented development in this area that contributes to the downtown, but also providing amenities to others for, uh, transit or a multimodal, um, area in general. The specific plan also encourages the inclusion of, uh, housing in this area, one, to accommodate our arena numbers, our regional housing needs assessment, but also to provide those, um, amenities to those, uh, that may want to access transit a little easier. And in that map that's shown, you will see on the site, um, highlighted in orange on the right, it is, as one option is a proposed mixed-use and/or multifamily residential. Next slide, please. Usually in overlays, um, in our zoning map, we have areas called SPD. That usually means there's a specific plan, um, district or plan that's associated with that, and that's what I just described shortly as part of the Fullerton Transit Center, or what we call the FTC. The real goal of that is to create a sustainable transit-oriented neighborhood, um, within the Santa Fe Depot. Next slide, please. As part of the ENA, the developer was to submit a development application, which the developers have done so, and in those proposed project, we have an understanding that it will be a mixed-use proposal. It will replace the existing parking and maintain its public access. They will have, um, access through the ground-level parking. There'll be hundred-and-twenty-four hotel rooms, hundred-and-forty residential with affordable units, as well as a retail, um, retail and restaurant use component. The initial proposal or contemplation was about five percent affordability. The developers has brought that up through, uh, public comment or council dis- um, comments as well and staff recommendation to bring that up to about twelve percent. All of which will be evaluated during the entitlement process. That entitlement process, typically in the land disposition process, you'll see that the entitlements are done prior to the sale, but we also have the ability to do the sale of the land tied with CEQA determination, um, and then have the entitlement process done after the fact. So for this particular project and site, we will begin the entitlement process through the Planning Commission, public process, as well as City Council in two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please. As part of this process, we did a CEQA analysis and was determined that an initial study mitigated neck deck was required and that the project can be mitigated to ensure that there's no significant impacts to the environment. Through this process, it was publicly noticed, we had thirty days of public comment, we received seven comment letters related to those environment, environmental impacts from state and public agencies, union representatives, and local residents. Those responses have been incorporated into the final ISM and D. Next slide, please. This is just to reiterate that there will be an entitlement process, which has been also baked into the development and disposition agreement. The entitlement process will entail the developer to submit a major site plan review, which has been submitted in October. The next step would be for a DCRC review, which is essentially a staff departmental review and to better understand what conditions and, uh, what components of the plan, public works, and other departments to really understand what the technical components of this project would require. Next would be community outreach. In early two thousand and twenty-three, uh, we anticipate at least one or more, depending on, uh, the feedback we received on the proposed project, to be in early two thousand and twenty-three, and of course, the public hearing for the Planning Commission and City Council, spring of two thousand and twenty-three. And that timelines are based in the schedule of performance in the DDA. They have roughly, uh, next slide, please. Uh, in here, with the post-closing conditions, they have roughly hundred-and-twenty days in good faith to achieve their entitlements. Accentuating circumstances will bring that to one-eighty. Once the entitlements are received, they have about hundred-and-eighty to two-hundred-and-forty days to submit their development plans. So really, all in all, we're baking in that timeline so that we ensure the project is moving along and that the project is also complete by two thousand and twenty-six. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, go back one slide, please. Uh, the major deal points of the DDA, so the purchase price appraisal was completed, that came back at one-point-four million, so that will be received, um, to the city. The escrow must close by December twenty-ninth. We had other stipulations at the hotel site, um, should be partnered with a major nationally-recognized hotel. We did make a revision to the DDA, uh, recently to include that it must be three or three-plus star hotel on the site. The developer is also accepting to all of the covenants so that they're, um, so that they agree to meet the schedule of performance as well as all the other default conditions on the site. Next slide, please. The revisions, to be clear, we did make a couple of revisions to the DDA, um, recital A and section three-point-two, as well as exhibit A. To clarify, we own two acres of the property. We are only selling a portion thereof, which equals one-point-six-six acres for the proposed project on the vacant property. So that has been clarified in the DDA as well as the resolution. The hotel site, again, as I mentioned, we included the, uh, components of what it means to be a nationally-major, uh, majorly national hotel chain, and then we are also requiring them to just, to clean it up, a lot line adjustment and a parcel map process, uh, prior to close of escrow. Next slide, please. So the recommendations before you tonight, um, of course, is to open the public hearing and receive testament, but also to adopt the resolution approving the disposition and development agreement by the City of Fullerton, West Park, LLC, as well as TA Partners, and also authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to execute this, um, agreement, and also finding that this action is pursuant to the CEQA findings.
Before we go to questions I'm gonna ask or, and open the hearing, I'm gonna ask our city attorney to, uh, notify the public on the process accordingly and as, in particular, if there's, uh, notification issues or protest issues.
Yes, uh, with respect to notification issues, uh, it was brought to my attention that there was a slight discrepancy regarding the noticing requirements, which for a ten-day posting. The CEQA portion of this was properly posted for ten days. The, the disposition portion, however, was only posted for seven days. In reviewing the law in this area to case right on point, it does indicate that seven days would be substantial compliance and that for somebody to challenge the noticing of the hearing, they would have to show actual harm by that three-day failure to post the full ten days. So absent that, uh, it has been properly, uh, noticed and properly posted, and therefore you can conduct your hearing this evening, absent somebody coming forward and saying that three days caused them actual harm. Secondly, with regard to the question of protest, um, we received information this evening, thanks to the mayor and council member, uh, that an outside group had, in fact, through their attorney, uh, sent notice of a protest that articulates a protest. We may receive additional con- uh, uh, comments this evening from other purposes, persons, perhaps also raising the question of a protest. If a legal, the word protest has legal significance, and if a proper protest is launched, that then changes the vote requirement for three-person vote or a majority vote to a supermajority or requiring four votes to approve this project, uh, so that protest is significant. We are this evening, while we're going through the pro- protest process, allowed to put on for this body information regarding the protest, and if it satisfies your feeling that the protest is not significant and has been remediated through the comments during the public hearing, you could determine that the four-fifth vote is not necessary. Uh, that would be a decision I would make later in the evening, after you have your discussion, if we get to a point where it's a question of three versus four votes, you could then have that conversation with respect to whether you've heard enough information to overturn the protest. However, I would say that the law in this area favors the protester as opposed, uh, to the mi- the more simple majority. Uh, finally, uh, this is a matter of record, uh, my firm is not the attorney who's been handling this matter. It is best special Krieger, Elizabeth Hall. This evening, she has a, a prior commitment, cannot communicate to us directly, so she's been emailing myself and the planning director, and I'm stating what she has confirmed to me is her position. She specifically indicated that she felt that the letter from the, uh, outside attorney was a legitimate protest, but that if you wanted to hear comment from our CEQA people, uh, they could properly address the CEQA questions that were raised, and she also felt the comments with respect to whether it should be a housing project or another type of use, that was purely within the discretion of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and, uh, I will, uh, have, uh, the applicant come forward, have ten minutes to speak, and then we'll follow that up with public comments thereafter. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, fellow Fullertonians, good evening. My name is Craig Hostard, lifelong resident of Fullerton and managing member of West Park Investments. Sitting behind me is Johnny Liu and Jeff Carlson, our partners from TA Partners, along with some other members of our team. Tonight, we are asking you to approve the transfer of the property and allow our team to continue moving forward with the entitlement process. Over the past year and especially the past several months, we have made significant advancements in the design and the entitlement process. Can I get his, the first slide up? I'm sorry. Yeah, you should have four. There you go.
No, you mean this one?
No, my slides, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We've engaged several groups and individuals in our city to hear their suggestions and concerns. The items heard, we consistently heard, the need for housing, the need for affordable housing, and the need for revenue to our city. We went back to our design team and said to them, we need to take these suggestions and concerns into account and design a project that meets the goals and takes into account as many of these suggestions and concerns as possible. Originally, the plan was a hundred-and-twenty-seven-room hotel with an above-ground parking lot. Next slide. The project now consists of, um, I think we missed this slide there. Can you go back? There you go. The project now consists of a hundred-and-twenty-four room, a hundred-and-twenty-four-room hotel, hundred-and-forty-seven, hundred-and-forty residential units, twelve percent of them is dedicated as affordable, thirty-seven-hundred square feet of restaurant retail space, replacement of the public and passenger parking lot, reconfiguration of the parking lot in front of the Train Museum, Train Depot for better floor, and inviting new entrance into the Train Museum and new walk-up sidewalks. Although the development has made great progress, design and scope is by far, is not close to being final. We just completed our first city review, our DCRC review, and we look forward to continued meetings in developing the conditions of approval. We'll continue to engage Fullerton Heritage Foundation to assist in the exterior design. They have had great input and suggestions to help ensure that we design a building that fits into the Fullerton atmosphere. We'll continue working with OCTA on redesigning the parking lot in front of the Train Depot, and improvements to the Santa Fe, to the Santa Fe parking lot and the buses, and come up with a traffic plan not to impede bus schedule during construction. We're, we are continuously working close with George and Harold of the Train Museum to provide them more space and an enticing new museum entrance. We have met with, we have met and will continue to meet with the Bruschala Brothers to see how we can accommodate their plans for their Bruhaus Restaurant in the Train Depot. We've had lengthy conversation with citizen advocate Jane Reefer to see how we can address some of her concerns as well. We have had initial conversations with local label, labor. I'll bet early, but we wanted to get the dialogue started. Next slide. So the benefits to our city. The hotel alone will bring in two-hundred-and-thirty jobs into our city. Think about that for a minute. That's just from the hotel. Two-hundred-and-thirty jobs in our local restaurants, our dry cleaners, our businesses, our hair salons, two-hundred-and-thirty jobs. Direct revenue to the city with our TOT tax, we're estimating anywhere from eight-hundred to a million dollars. Now, all of us know what TOT tax is. That's the tax you pay on your hotel room. The good thing about the TOT tax with the hotel is that money stays with the municipality. It's not shared with the county, the state, school districts, or any other agencies. So bringing in one million dollars a year into our city. The things we can do with that, who knows? Rent subsidies, homelessness endeavors, maintaining our downtown streets and sidewalks. Estimated to be over ten million dollars over the next ten years, which will then go in perpetuity. The positive financial economic impact, hotel guests will be coming into our city, spending money in our restaurants, at our shops. That's estimated to have a financial impact on our businesses of about thirty million dollars on an annual basis. That's a lot of revenue coming in our city. Four-hundred-and-seventeen million over the next ten years. This project, without a doubt, will bring significant financial impact to our city through visitor spending, tax revenue, and jobs. Now, we have spent the last several months, if not longer, diligently working on our DDA with the city's attorneys and our attorneys. The final DDA requires that we meet very stringent and strict milestones. I think Sania did a very good job explaining that. We have time requirements. We have a certain amount of time to obtain entitlements, providing construction drawings, submitting a financing plan, obtaining permits, starting construction, and project completion. The DDA spells out very specifically these conditions that we must meet, and if we don't, we will be considered in default per the terms of the DDA, and the property will then revert back to city ownership. That's very important. However, we have a very high-level expectation this development will be completed on time and will begin the catalyst to help revitalize our downtown. Now, come January first, two thousand and twenty-three, you no longer will be decide what goes on that property, the state of California will decide through the surplus land act. As our elected officials, you should decide what is best for this property, not for our city, not the state of California. We should not allow any outside individuals or organizations to influence what is best for our city. This is our city, yours, mine, and all hundred-and-thirty thousand of us to make this city our home. We should decide what is best for our city. We've been working very hard with city staff, our consultants, and city groups to bring the best possible project. This project is in the best interest and the health, safety, and welfare of our city taxpayers and residents. This decision is yours alone. There is a balance that needs to be met between housing, affordable housing, and revenue to our city. Next slide. This is a socially responsible development with a healthy balance between affordability, housing and revenue, and especially job creation. We firmly believe this project will revitalize our downtown. I've said this before and I will say it again, being a resident of Fullerton for the last sixty-four years, our downtown is a gem and it needs to be taken care of. Please, look at how this project will benefit all hundred-and-thirty thousand residents of Fullerton. You've been voted into office and sitting in that chair to make sure our city properly functions properly, financially, and socially. That is your responsibility, as daunting as it may be. That is why we've elected you. So please, help us get this project continued going and bring this fabulous asset to our city. And I'm available on any questions, and I have Johnny Liu here. If you have any questions regarding the actual project, um, he can be happy to come up and talk.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, we'll now hear public comments on this, uh, this matter. Uh, those that are registered to speak, please, uh... Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call, uh, those that are registered to speak?
Let me also have one brief comment, that is the protests that we did. That is, the protests that we did receive becomes part of the public record and the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I'll note that we have registered Budarik, Curtis Gamble, Sandy Stiosny, Terry Thomas, Matthew Seltzer, and Sabina Drossi.
All right, so if you are, if the Madam City Clerk has called your name, please come up to the microphone and address counsel with your comments.
Thank you very much, the leadership of the city again. Now, I'm not stayed in Fullerton City for 20 years, but with my little research, I think the city was established late 19th century. The population by then is not the same as today. The scientists say that even though we are living in this world, I'll die tomorrow, this earth will be with us for the next 4 billion to 5 billion years coming. The concern is that this is public asset. That is what we call the principle of public diversity. When you want to dispose public asset, there are various considerable factors. You must consider the foreseeability, like our kids, our grandkids, where will they be? Other projects. So instead of completely selling off the public asset, the city, there are many other ways they can work with the developers or the investors, like concession or leasing the land for a couple of years, then it reverts back to the council. Instead of completely selling it. The language of the investors are good, the developers, they say we'll do this. We'll lower the low cost of housing, such like that. Many projects have been here, we've been here for many years. After that, after one year, that price of the low-cost housing is not there. It shoots up on the roof. So I feel that the city council should look this with another eye and consider another way of how they want to work with this investor. But I feel it's not right to completely sell off the public asset for the interest of the future of this council. We love Fullerton City Council. We have children, people are growing, the population is keeping doubling every year. It's growing rapidly. So when all the assets is sold, where will they be? Because in addition to that, public asset, when you're in the public land, you feel more secure than a private property because private property, there are laws surrounding it. The police will be called, arrest you for invading or for going there without being invited. So I feel that the city should reconsider disposing of this public asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Sandy Stiosny. I own multifamily property in Fullerton. I tell people I live and work in Fullerton, but I actually vote and sleep in Irvine. For the past five years, the Hostert brothers have advocated for a hotel on a site owned by the city of Fullerton, which also will include affordable rental units. The public benefits I see from this project. The project provides good addition to Fullerton housing element. The project will help redevelop and revitalize Fullerton. The project requires few city services and contributes new sales and property tax revenue. I understand there are those on council ideologically opposed to giving or selling any city land to anyone. I can appreciate your position, but I ask the other council members to consider the following. Craig and Chris Hostert are Fullerton natives. They've attended public school, college in Fullerton, and like many of you, have lived in Fullerton with their families most of their adult lives. The farthest thought they have with their unsolicited proposal is in any way to disturb or defraud their hometown. They want this project because it's good for Fullerton. I challenge any elected or appointed official tonight to publicly state how this project will deplete Fullerton of its assets or how these developers will get more than they give to it. In closing, this project will produce city revenue desperately needed to deliver public services. It will add to affordable housing and help make downtown Fullerton a go-to destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Mayor, council members, my name is Terry Thompson. I'm the CEO of Terry's Automotive. Sorry, that's the wall. It's, of course, we're opposed to it because, to be honest with you, where the city built our building, I will work here and the construction will be just on it because I work right at the wall. And that's the way the city set it up. So I will work within three feet, four feet of the construction. And not to worry, but nobody has said anything about the lamppost black problem the land has that stretches from the railroad across Lemon over there. I get letters on it from the county saying how the property is contaminated, and the property has to stay sealed. We can't tear it up, do anything with it. Nobody talks about that. The other thing is, is if they're going to create so many jobs, that must mean everybody that works in Vegas can afford to live in Vegas. All of those hotel cleaners making all that money, cleaning up the rooms, doing all, they must just make some killer money. And Vegas must just make a lot of money. Anaheim has the same problem that people can't afford. You've got five families living. COVID spread because they have five families living in a house in Anaheim. It's not a genius. We're not smart, dumb, anything. It's just common sense. It's stuff we've known since we've been a child. We're going to do the same thing in Fullerton. You're going to jam 230 people into homes in Fullerton. They can't afford to live where they work. Remember Henry Ford said, hey, I want to pay a living wage so the guy can buy my car? Well, you're going to put all these people, and they can't even afford to go to the restaurant with their money. And so it just, for me, it's bad. You know, they came to us years ago, offered a lot of money to leave, okay? We tried to get together, fine, I know the numbers, I know it all by heart. Then they came to us and sent us a proposal for one-tenth of the percent that they originally said. It's like me coming up to you and said, oh, I know we're going to pay $100,000 a year for your job, but next year, you're just going to do it for 10. And you don't have a choice in the matter. You know, it's like an insult to injury. I just think that when somebody, and by the way, my guys aren't minimum wage. The guys at Willman across the way aren't minimum wage. The city doesn't have enough parking as it is. We're going to get rid of parking. You're going to, I mean, not sell me on homeless, but you're going to do the problem that we do have, which is the homeless. When you guys were holding the train station thing, while the cops were chasing the homeless out the one end, they were walking up the street the other way. And I know the police, they're just driving them. Like what officers tell us, because we have a lot of customers that are officers, we just drive them. We keep them going. We can't arrest them, we can't do anything with them, we just keep them going. And the truth is, because I don't know the cure. You guys don't, the police don't, nobody knows. One day, hopefully, we find it. But I'm sorry, for me, it would have to be, they would have to move us. And the other thing is, is if it does go through, guaranteed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We will do the, for the environmental impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'll finish with him. I'm the president of the same company. My biggest issue is it's going to destroy our business. You're going to have trucks unloading junk in the middle of the road. You're going to have people that are going to have to go out west on Santa Fe, which is going to cause collisions, because I'm sure that gentleman right there can attest to how many collisions are there now, as everybody can currently can go out the opposing direction. Now you're going to have that street shut down. So now that's going to multiply more accidents, more deaths. Already had a motorcycle killed there. So that's one thing. Two, there's going to be a lot of vibration. Shills probably speak about that, you know, which is going to cause other issues. Dust, all the other stuff. And yeah, 230 employees, that's really cool. But we have 3,700 customers in our clientele base, 424 corporate accounts. Every one of those corporate accounts is looking to hire somebody. So jobs is not the greatest thing in the world because you can't even go to Del Taco now because there's not enough employees there. So I don't think that's a big, oh, wow, big deal. Yeah, it's going to bring a lot of money to the city. Okay, that's cool. We don't bring as much money to the city. So it's all money-driven? Is that all it is? No, I don't think it's the best thing for the city. For one, there's enough people here, so, okay, let's bring more people here. Cool. More people to use to waste the water that we're already on a water restriction force. So now you're going to have more people living in the city to burn more water. We're on restriction, you can't water your lawns. As a business, we're not allowed to water our lawn. It's all dead in the front street. So, you know, I'm totally opposed to it, totally protest it. And I don't think it's a benefit for the city, and definitely not for a small business. Been in that same location for 22 years, which will make our business just go to, be horrible. Horrible for our customers to get in and out, who a lot of them are in the 60-plus age, not the best drivers. It's going to be dangerous, there's going to be a lot of debris everywhere. I think it's going to be a complete nightmare.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sabina Andressi, and I'm vice president of Willman Incorporated. We've been in that location since 1969. We're a family-owned business. We do sheet metal fabrication, and we currently have 40 employees. We have a lot of capital equipment there that would suffer with heavy equipment and heavy construction. Not to mention, we need to get materials in and out, sheet metal, that we usually have delivered in the alley. And this type of construction would be devastating for our business. I understand you'll be making a lot of revenue off of it, but for us, it would be very difficult to continue operating in that location. And that would be very sad, since we've been there very long. And the only alternative is for them to buy us out and move us into a different location. And I don't see that in the cards. And it's very difficult operating in California as it is, and let alone having a construction like that impact our business. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Ernie Kelsey with Fullerton Heritage. And Fullerton Heritage supports the current Transportation Center development project concept. We have met both with West Park and TA Partners, and we found them very accommodating and enthusiastic about the project. We believe wholeheartedly that this project needs to complement the downtown area and it needs to enhance what we already have and really build on the charm of what is downtown. We've told this to the team, and we look forward to seeing their ideas and their revisions. From a big-picture point of view, we do have concerns about the Transportation Center-specific plan. We think the plan is outdated, and we look forward to working with the city when they have time to discuss possible changes to this plan. Regarding the sale of land, we think it's good. We need to see a parcel map. We're a little confused on what's included in the sale. The spur tracks are right there in the loading dock, so we want to see really what is included in this sale. And Fullerton Heritage is here to work with the team and with the city so we can make this an outstanding project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next comment, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Schuman. I'm speaking on behalf of Unite Here Local 11 to raise concerns about the sufficiency of the MND as well as the proposed sale of the property. Before I get into those comments, I did want to make a comment on the noticing issue around the DDA. So we were aware with sufficient notice that the sales MND was going to council, but we did not understand that the DDA was going before council until later. It definitely would have been helpful to our ability to review the project documents and prepare public comment if we'd known about the DDA sooner, the DDA coming to council tonight. If we had these issues, I'm sure others did as well, so we'd recommend that the city do re-notice the project. But anyways, so back to my prepared comments. In addition to the issues already raised in the record regarding the staff reports flawed jobs analysis, potentially significant air quality impacts, and the MND's failure to address some of the project's energy impacts, we are particularly concerned about the missed opportunity to develop all of this public land located right next to a MetroLink station into much-needed affordable housing, more affordable housing. The project comes, this protest comes after years of engagement by Local 11 in this parcel sale and development process. Local 11 members have been advocating for this land to be used all for housing since 2019. The proposed sale and DDA do not serve the public interest or convenience because what the public needs is more housing, not a hotel. This land belongs to the taxpayers, and it should be used to benefit them, not tourists or hotel developers. Surplus city-owned land is rare in Fullerton, and with the housing affordability crisis worsening in this community, it is urgent that we use this land to the advantage of the city's residents and workers. The use of this land to develop a hotel instead of using all of it for housing is contrary to the fundamental goals of the city's general plan and the applicable Fullerton Transportation Center-specific plan, which prioritize the construction of affordable housing, especially on surplus land. Additionally, the intent of the state's Surplus Land Act is that local cities use surplus land like this parcel to develop affordable housing. The city is attempting to take advantage of a loophole in the state law to develop some of this land into a hotel despite the law's intent and despite the public interest and need for much more affordable housing. Counsel should not go out of their way to circumvent the spirit and intent of state and local laws just to benefit a hotel developer. We urge you to prioritize housing and your constituents over hotel developers and tourists. Please vote no on the proposed sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Good evening, sir.
I'm Richard Andrews. I'm a co-owner of the property on the corner of Santa Fe and Lemon Street. We have, I've been in town here in business, started in business in 1960. The city condemned our first property and moved us down to where we are now. All this talking about this big, beautiful hotel is quite wonderful. But, and the traffic problem is going to be horrific, which it already is. I don't know if you've been driving, trying to drive through Fullerton here, eight, nine o'clock in the morning or in the afternoon from two o'clock on. Traffic is backed up for miles trying to get through town. And all of this, if there's a way to cure the traffic problem, I think it should be done now and not wait until you build a monster like that. Another thing is about the water. We're supposed to be in a drought, and all we do is want more people there to flush more toilets and take more showers. So what's that, how are we going to cure it with that? So I'm totally opposed to the project for that itself. I don't think it'd be wonderful for Fullerton, and there's other ways around it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening again, Mr. Gamble.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, the veterans, the low income. Oh, also, I'm a former real estate broker also. So I kind of want to brag about that. The tracks of Fullerton. I think that this project is a very good project. And I say that from a, from a former, well, from a former real estate point of view. But let me give you some other reasons. The Hotel Fullerton, which is located on Orange Thorpe and Raymond, they're going to demolish that, and that's a 240-unit hotel building. So we're going to need to replace it quickly with something. The Citriol Apartments, right across the street, right across the street from Lemon, that was a warehouse a few years ago. And we turned that into an apartment, a 56-unit apartment, low-income apartment. Many of my friends who lived at the Fullerton City Lights, I remember about 10 at the same time, within the same week, moved over to the Citriol Apartments. Because City Lights apartments are one, are studio apartments. Citriol Apartments were one, two, three bedrooms. We, just like we built Citriol Apartments across the street, well, right across Lemon, we can build the hotel slash apartments because they're very much needed. The Amtrak Station, a few years ago, six, seven years ago, I was homeless for seven years. I watched many nights when that train stopped, for whatever reason, stopped running. People, they bust people from the train station because the train wasn't running. If only we had had a hotel right there, some rooms, it could have helped those people that night. The hotels up and down Harbor, especially by the 91 freeway, they closed down, some of them. Some of the bigger ones, right there, by the 91 freeway. Again, we really need to do something. Again, this project is a beautiful project, and I approve of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next comment, please. Next comment, please.
Hello, Mayor, Council, public. My name's Nathan. I'm from the Brick Basement, just like about two blocks from where they're planning the development of the hotel. And there's definitely like pros and cons being presented by the public and the developers. I definitely would say, as us as retailers, it sounds definitely nice, the idea of hotel and residential, but at the same time, what will the impact be of the already existing businesses that are immediately adjacent to the plot? My brother-in-law spoke from Terry's Automotive, which is an auto body shop right directly on the corner between the train station and the plot, and it would greatly affect their business operations, and they have been there for over two decades. So, it is something to consider. And his partner mentioned something about contaminants in the ground beneath their business, which I wouldn't know of because our business is significantly down the road. But if that were the case, that would be something to stall or delay such actions. And hearing from a few other business owners that are immediately in the area, it would affect their business operations as well, which would not be of the best interest to the community that already is versus planning for what potential it could be. And what people brought up about the usage of water, a hotel would use significant amounts of water, which I would have never even thought of at all. So, that would be quite a strain on already precious resources that are being delegated to different parts of the city. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment in chambers. Go ahead, sir. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I think we're looking at this, my first idea is not to stand in the way of progress, because progress is very important, but I feel like I would, personally, I protest against this project because I feel like the developer has not come up with a plan that's inclusive enough of the community. The size of that building in, the size of that building is six stories. It requires, building that size you'd see in a major city like Anaheim or Los Angeles, it requires lots of open space around it, but there is literally no open space. The size of that street, Santa Fe is so small, and there's a parking structure on the other side. You go right up against the business of Terry's Automotive, right on the tracks. There's just no, the size of that thing is, is not acceptable, so I would be against the sale of this property. And another reason why this property is so important is because this is, this is historically park space. This used to be a park area with grass from both sides of the train station. You used to be able to watch the trains from your cars. This is the last space, and even though that's a parking lot, I still consider this park space because people come there and they park. There's people that come there and they, they have a tailgate party, they, every weekend there's people that watch trains. Now, the, the train station is a very unique location in Fullerton because there's very few train stations that have so many different types of trains. MetroLink, Amtrak, freight trains, people come to watch trains, and there's really no plan outside of, outside of the patrons to really enjoy that view anymore. So, at the least, I feel like the developer should bring forth a plan that would be more like the Amplify Building, which is more inclusive. There's lots of plate glass windows, there's lots of aspect to the building, something to draw the public in, and there should be some grass space by the tracks, little park space. But the size of this is, it makes me kind of laugh because when I see that, I just can't visualize it where it's supposed to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Good evening. My name is Z. J. Hahn. I became, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Zara Dunlop and Silva, our standing department heads and our fantastic city staff. I'm Z. J. Hahn. I became familiar with the city when I relocated here in nineteen seventy-eight. I am impressed with a local Fullerton person who wants to do something to help our city. The city council knows I support a larger tax base, that ten million dollars sounds fantastic. I also don't discount any comments that have been made. Anytime there's construction, there's dust, there's deliveries, there's banging and pounding. That's part of, you know, progression. What I do want to see addressed, and I want the council members to get this in the plan, and I have nothing against the plan, but the additional traffic, so our, the roads need to be striped, widened, and paved to handle the traffic. And if we're going to go this route, let's just cover all the bases. Balance, projects like this need balance. Second thing, how many kitchens and toilets in a hundred-and-forty residences in a hundred-and-twenty-four-room hotel? It's going to use water. I know that, we all know it's going to use water. So, as long as this project has a water reclamation project where they're taking the drops out of the air and using them, reclaiming them, or they have a contract with a coastal desalinization plant to provide the water, because we are in a drought. My rates in this city continue to go up. If you're going to continue to open things that are using more water, I, I have to pay that when my rates go up. So, I mean, and I'm for the progress in these dollars, so let's just have a desalinization contract or a water reclamation plan. And just to plant a seed in this five-member council, if you were to open up a auto mall or auto square, I'll guarantee you there's a lot less restrooms and kitchens in two acres of an auto mall than there are in a hotel and in residences. Go Titans, go Hornets.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any more registered speakers, Madam City Clerk?
No.
All right, very well. Good evening.
Hello, I'm, I'm Eve. Hello, Mayor. I'm totally for this hotel apartments. I think like when people come on the train or in between jobs or whatever, they could stay at a motel right there. I thought it was so perfect. I went to, flew to Chicago once and their airport has a motel in the center of it. And it was perfect because people that had layovers and, or whatever in between, I had a motel to go to, to stay over instead of people laying around the airport or whatever, just like with the train, you know, like in between jobs, like I said, and it'll also create jobs for other people, and I think it'd be a really good idea.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments on Zoom?
We have six speakers on Zoom.
Very well.
Jane Rifer, you should be allowed to unmute.
Yes, thank you. As many people know, I'm a person who really wants to see public transit in this area, and I actually believe that a hotel is a transit amenity. Airports have hotels, train stations have hotels, it would be amazing. But it's really rough to see, for me to see projects that actually preclude transit and pedestrian transportation and so forth. If it's going to be a transit-oriented development, it's really on our city to make sure that all the transit amenities and concepts are baked in. It is not the developer's fault that we didn't ask for those things, but they really have to be there. Let's see, I appreciate that they're trying to change things, but why should they be having to do this on the fly rather than our city just asking for these things in the first place? These are normal basics. So, the MND was incorrect because it did not study transit properly, and, and it's just a poor document. Lots of times I say I'm a little confused by things. In this case, I am not. This item tonight is in violation of the Brown Act in multiple ways, and I have to say it's an abuse of the public trust with our public land and our public processes. Did you know that the MND was just put in the, in, online last night, yesterday, without the appendices? Today, while you are in closed session, the result, the new resolution that you're voting on tonight, I dropped in, I don't even know what it is, but it does change the approvals you're making tonight. There is no MMRP, although it's now referenced in your new resolution, but there is no MMRP in the documents posted anywhere. The DDA just changed recently, and I think the scope, scope of development just got dropped from it. This is just crazy. I don't know how you can keep track of anything this. I feel like I'm in a funhouse trying to decide where the parcel was, what was included, were the leased items included, were they not? The noticing has been misleading, the maps in the major, in the noticing and the major site, in the, sorry, the maps in the MND are incorrect, they use the wrong APM numbers. You're actually being asked to pass an environmental document tonight for a project in the parking structure as well. I know those entitlements are going to come later, but why are you passing the environmental for something where you don't even know what the parameters are? I believe that the DDA does not list public benefit as required. I believe that the DDA does not list the affordable housing in there as required. Could be wrong on that, but it's really hard to tell with something that just got dropped while I was participating with you somewhat in closed session. I, I believe in a hotel for this area, it's essential, but I believe you should vote no tonight and start again. This is just, this is too much unusual information. Also, the pricing, the price, two acres of prime land in the heart of our downtown for less than the price of most homes in North Fullerton? I'm just shocked at the pricing. If you want to increase the price to actual market rate, this would be a different discussion. I, I just don't think we should.
Thank you, Ms. Rifer.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next speaker, please.
Jane Rand, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. I'm one of those people who still wants to understand why we didn't prioritize our, our public, publicly-owned land with a specific plan already in place that would allow for development of housing to be sort of fast-tracked into affordable housing. I know that this, this ENA was kind of sheltered through or was pushed through or supported by the former council. It was sort of the last act of Supervisor Chafee before he left the city council. I would have expected more outreach in those four years, more discussion in the public, more understanding, and instead, we're kind of rushing this through last minute, trying to avoid the property going to surplus, which I think might have been misrepresented as stating that the state would decide what happens there. It would have created an opportunity for, or can create an opportunity for an affordable housing developer to have a chance at this cut-rate deal, one-point-four million dollars for this land. That might actually be able to facilitate some affordable housing. That's usually the difficulty for most affordable housing projects. I would also like to understand the affordability that has, that's being presented here, the level of affordability. Is it eighty percent of median, or is it extremely low income? How many units is it? There seems to be a lot missing from the DDA that I would expect. I don't know at what point we will discuss the appropriate amenities for transit and active transportation, but they're not present in this plan. And I think there are some things that in the DDA that should explicitly ask for certain things to be put in place to facilitate safe mobility of people walking, biking, using our public transit, people with disabilities getting around. Thanks.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
North Orange County Chamber, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor Young, Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker, Councilmember Zara Dunlop and Silva. My name is Andrew Gregson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer and President of North Orange County Chamber of Commerce. Since eighteen ninety-three, the business community has strongly benefited from the Chamber's of Commerce's support in providing and advocating for Fullerton's economic growth and success. The North Orange County Chamber of Commerce believes the West Park project will adjust to accommodate the growth and needs of the community as our economy continues to grow. The project balances preservation and development, preserving the rich history of the city of Fullerton, while helping the city grow and change with the needs of the current and future residents and business owners of the city. We strongly encourage you to approve the West Park project as we are confident that it will bring positive change, increase the city and other businesses' revenue, and creating jobs sustainability in the great city of Fullerton. I'd like to thank you for considering this approval, and we look forward to seeing the West Park project being positively changing the city of Fullerton. On a final note, as it's rarely expressed, I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your dedication to serving our community, which is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Elizabeth Hansburg, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, yes. Hello, good after, or good evening, City Councilmembers. I am here to support this change. I think it would bring much-needed revitalization to the area around the train station. We have had a specific plan for that area for many years and for a variety of reasons. The only thing that has become developed from that is the Citriol Apartments. That actually was part of that original specific plan for the train station. And then, just to speak to the whole issue of affordable housing on surplus land, I am a housing advocate. I advocate for affordable housing on a very regular basis, but the, the distinction that I want to make for you here tonight is that the twelve percent affordable units that are going to be included in this larger development are not the same type as the kind where, you know, you have a capital stack that includes, you know, tax credits and you have to go to the state. I mean, it takes forever because of putting together the capital stack needed from the various funding sources. Whereas, if I understand this correctly, we are going to use the market rate revenue of the market rate apartments to subsidize some of the lower-income residents. So, they're not going to be going out for tax credits. It's not going to take three years to get the funding to put those apartments online, rentable, you know, real bedrooms and real bathrooms and real kitchens for real people to live in. And that's a really important distinction because, yes, we could, you know, sit on our hands and say, okay, no, we're not going to develop it, we're going to wait for, you know, a one-hundred-percent affordable project. We will still be waiting because there is not enough tax credits out there for the number of projects that want to get done. So, in an effort to move this forward, I would say, do this project, it's time, change is hard, but there's going to always be reasons to keep it the way that it is, but we need forward-thinking visionaries to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Call-in user one, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Maureen Milton. I want to make a statement that when the presentation was going on, there was absolutely no mention whatsoever of handicap or mobily-challenged accessibility hotel rooms and apartments. And when they had the presentation earlier this year, they mentioned that every room would be handicap-accessible and handicap usable. And that is almost absolutely ridiculous because the mobily-challenged have special needs, and you don't have to do that for every apartment or every hotel room. The hotel rooms and the apartments should be on the first floor because above ground, if there is an emergency, anyone in these rooms are as good as dead. And I am very, very upset, as I say, this is not included in the low-income and such accommodations. I feel that there should be a mobily-challenged, accessible, usable, and livable hotel rooms and apartments, not just accessible to get into the building, but to use it, to live there, and to enjoy. So, if this project continues, I understand the difficulties that have to, that everyone has to incur, incur around the area, but something will be done. And we need the, because of the mandates from the state, we've got to have these, all this extra accommodations to fulfill what we're supposed to do. But I do want it to be something that can be used Uh, but I do want it to be something that can be used by everyone, not just by a few. Uh, and also there should be balconies because look what happened with COVID. That can happen again because when you do something, you plan it for, as I say, at least 50 to 100 years. So that is what I, um, am very upset about that they made no mention of the mobily challenged if they proceed with this, uh, situation. Uh, uh, so anyway, I thank you for allowing me to, uh, say my piece and, uh, looking forward
Thank you.
to, uh, what's your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Two more hands raised in Zoom. Jordan Sisson, you should be able, wait, someone just raised their hand and I missed my button, sorry. We have now three more hands raised in Zoom. And Jordan Sisson, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Audible Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jordan Sisson. I'm a sequel attorney speaking for United Here Local 11, who as you heard today is challenging the D D A. As explained in our comment letter, Local 11 has approximately 100 members who actually live and work in Fullerton and is protesting the D D A pursuant to the California Government Code procedures. In my limited time, I want to highlight five points about the project and the Park West M and D. First, the M and D fails to discuss the future discretionary entitlements, including the major site plan and the potential alcohol C U P. This will entail future decisions affecting the project improvements, infrastructure, circulation design, and other matters that was not disclosed in the M and D. As you heard from the applicant, much more needs to be ironed out in the future. This should have been covered by the M and D, not deferred for after the approval of the D D A and the M and D. Second point is that there's a fair argument that air quality impacts on V O Cs will be significant. South Coast A Q M D noted the M and D's failure to acknowledge that project painting would cause significant V O C emissions during construction. In response, the M and D revised its air analysis to assume the project would take a year to paint the project. That's at a rate of one apartment and a half a hotel room per day. This is a logical assumption that's not enforceable and moreover, not supported by substantial evidence. This type of ad hoc justification is not reasonable. It evades proper sequel analysis and ultimately avoids meaningful mitigation measures. My third point is that the M and D fails to incorporate all the project design features and mitigation measures listed in the specific plan program E I R. Failure to do so prevents this project from being consistent with a specific plan and jeopardizes project impacts being left unmitigated. Fourth, the project fails to require onsite solar. Sequel Guidelines Appendix Act makes clear that the M and D must consider the site's ability to incorporate onsite renewable energy, but the M and D fails to do so. Fifth, it seems like the city is rushing the M and D and the D D A, which is contrary to Sequel's requirement to mitigate impacts. It's contrary to the normal city processing that requires the entitlements to be secured at the same time as the D D A and the, and the Sequel review. And it's contrary to state policy, uh, that prioritizes affordable housing for city land. Um, additionally, you heard tonight that there has been some last minute changes to the D D A, there's been faulty noticing and other irregularities. This collectively prejudices Local 11, the public, and informed decision-making, as you heard from multiple folks tonight. Furthermore, this office is unaware of any authority that would allow the city to reject the protest via simple majority. As you heard from the city attorney at the start of this public hearing, our protest is legitimate. You also heard from the city attorney that the law favors Local 11's protest and the forfeits vote requirement to override a legitimate protest. In closing, we urge the city to reject the D D A and respect the clear Government Code Section rules about protest. Our protest incorporates by reference the concerns raised by fellow commenting parties. And lastly, we respectfully request that the, that the city make city land available to affordable housing developers under the state's Surplus Land Act, which still allows the city to negotiate in good faith, not the state as suggested by the applicant. I thank you for your time and submit the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
One more hand raised now. Um, caller ending, uh, 1419, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. My name is Lori Thompson, and I am a current resident at Soco Walk. Um, I have supported a redevelopment of this area for many years. Uh, multiple plans have been, uh, given, and I have attended some of the meetings for this planning. Um, the only thing that hasn't been addressed is the parking structure that is adjacent to the post office. Um, if we're looking for a little bit of open space, this is a poorly designed parking structure. One of the entrances is only one way, and if it's full, you have to U-turn out. This would allow some open space since, uh, the Donald Duck Juice Factory went down and we have the beautiful structure. Or, um, so it would also give some area for the train area. Um, since Union Park is still currently closed, at least it would be some open space in this land. Uh, support the project and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Any more comments on Zoom?
No more Zoom.
Very well, we'll bring this back to council and ask the applicant if he wishes to make a rebuttal to any of the comments that were made by the public. Good evening again, sir.
Good evening. The only thing I'd like to address is to clarify when I said the state will make the decision is here's what you're confronted with is the Surplus Land Act will take effect on January 1st. You'll have to go out to an R F P, which, which will require no minimum of less than 25% of the units being affordable. If no developer steps forward, then the city will have to go no less than 15%. But the problem we have with this site, which we have a challenge with financially, is replacing the existing public parking. That puts a major stress on the finances. The only way we're going to find a developer to come in and do affordable housing to the extent that the state's going to require is through some kind of subsidies. I think one of the, one of the callers talked about how difficult it is to get, uh, capital stack and get money from state agencies, uh, county agencies. So I wanted to clarify what I meant by that because the only thing you left that park, that property can only go as a parking lot or as affordable, but then there's going to have to be some major subsidies in order to pay for that existing public parking. Plus we have the soils conditions on this property. You know, we did a phase two soils on this property. We don't have any carbon, uh, infiltration on this property. We did the phase two. However, when the city removed a petroleum tank back in 1996, they just dumped soil in the ground. So all of that has to be accommodated. That has, adds financial strain to this project as well. So I have no other comments. As far as the, as far as the Sequa and the notification, we followed whatever the city, we followed the guidelines and the city did all those notifications.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask the, the question?
Of course.
One second. So we'll, uh, allow for any council members to ask questions of the applicant. Thank you very much for being patient, sir.
Okay.
Or staff, uh, council member.
Thank you. Um, on the, uh, the, the business next door, uh, the two businesses, actually, there's one adjacent and, and then the one across the street. How would during, it seems that the, they, they will be impacted during construction. I'm not sure about after, if it's done, there may be some benefits, but during construction, there, there, there could definitely may be some impact. So how would the construction be, um, helping the businesses mitigate these?
Right. So we have just started in our D C R C review, and part of the requirements we're going to have conditions of approval is that we have a traffic management plan in place. So we're not impacting those businesses so their clients can come freely, go freely. So we're not, we, that's going to be part of the entitlement process and we're all for that. We don't want to hurt any businesses. We want to make sure they have access to their, their clients have access. So whatever mitigation measures are put in place by city staff, we'll follow.
All right. Is there any other questions of the applicant?
No questions of the applicant. I do have some for staff.
Well, let's just get all the, yes, sir. Go ahead, council member.
That was going to be my question about, are we going to be, are we going to be able to leave Santa Fe free flowing? So it seemed like we probably will do that, but I do have a question for staff, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, very well. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your patience. We'll, uh, ask Director Thomas to come back. Councilmember Silva, go ahead, sir.
So, so the, the, the impact on the businesses, and I think the, where is her name? The, the person with the sheet metal business across, they worry about the delivery and so forth. I believe the city owns the lot, the northwest corner on Lemon and Santa Fe, correct?
That's correct.
So potentially we can use that a, a, as a site to help at least the sheet metal business use for delivery pickup because it's right adjacent to the sheet metal place. So, so that might be something that we could do. And then in your experience, Director Thomas, do you foresee us having to close any portion of Santa Fe that are going, you know, e- east and west? Or do you think we can, we'll leave it open so again, the traffic, uh, will be free flowing?
Yeah, I will have to defer to actually our Public Works Deputy Director here, but in, in general, as part of our building process or even submittals, we'll have them submit sort of a phasing plan of what that construction, temporary construction timeline will look like. They then will have to reach out to the abutters, um, so that we have, one, if they're abutting it, they need their sort of clearance for it. But outside of this, we would certainly notify them that this temporary construction is happening and we can certainly use our city-owned assets there to be able to temporarily sort of relieve some of those issues. Um, but that conversation we can certainly have during the entitlement process.
And then, uh, the, the parcel, it's being sold for 1.4 million, but explain this to me, that was, the, the price was lowered, I guess, because there needs to be work on the, the soil, right?
That is correct.
And, and so how much was deducted, I guess, or, or devalued because of that?
Sure. The original appraisal in 2019 was 2.3 million dollars. A soils investigation letter, um, by Plump Engineering was provided in February 2020. So when we did the appraisal this time, we have to take that into consideration. And in that report, um, for the work of cast and drilled hole, um, as well as other foundational construction work, it was valued at 2.375. And so the appraisal used that as to devalue that property as an existing parking lot and for anyone to come onto site, whether it's this developer or another, would have to make those remediation, um, into consideration, those remediation costs into consideration. And so that is why that seems so low as to 1.4 in addition to the most recent sales and comps in the area.
No, and I just wanted to clarify that because it, it does seem low, but I think if, if the soil was clean, if you will, we would be receiving the 2.3. So it's about a $700,000 cost. And then, um, on, on the affordable housing, you know, we, we talked about, uh, what's going to happen if we don't move this and it goes to the surplus. So if it goes that way, I, I know that, uh, that the state has allowed that you, uh, develop, and if you're near a transportation center, the parking requirements are, are lower. So could this happen there if, let's say it doesn't pass tonight and we go and we've got affordable housing, more housing going on, the developer at that point could say, well, because we're right next to a transit, we don't have to replace all the parkings, right? I mean, that could be, uh, is, is there, I guess, a concern about that?
Sure. Usually on a buy right project, I think that would certainly be a concern. The, the benefit of us owning this site is we can really put any stipulation within reason on these properties. So the usage of that parking lot right now for the commuters or others, um, you know, our original intent was to preserve that, and if that is still the intent, we can certainly provide a number of public parking spaces in perpetuity within the project. Um, but if we were not to stipulate such a requirement, then yes, via the zoning code and the new legislation that's coming down, you know, within, I believe, a half mile radius, um, it alleviates that requirement of parking.
All right. Thank you.
Anything further, sir? Very well. Uh, Councilmember Zara, any questions of our staff and Director Thomas?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify tonight, I know there was questions about the sequence of events as far as the agreement, development agreement versus the disposition. What, if this passes tonight, um, this is not the final say to this. This, if, we still have to go through the entitlement process, there's a public, um, community meetings process and, and this could ultimately come back with, um, another vote that could basically eliminate or cancel the project, right? Could vote it down in, in the future if, if all the, the process doesn't go the way the city's requiring. In that case, the, this land will come back to the city, correct?
Yes, it's a twofold. So today you're approving the disposition of the land. In that agreement, you have the entitlement process, and in that process, you and the Planning Commission, as well as the public, have the ability to sort of craft that proposal, um, based off of what was submitted and/or revise that the way that you need to. What really brings in the default and to bring it back to us is the entitlement schedule that we have in the D D A. So it gives them the ability of about 120 days to receive that entitlement. Let's say we, you know, we don't agree on the proposal, you vote it down, that would then bring it back to the city, that would trigger the default clauses.
And, um, could you explain a little bit? I know the, there was a question on sale versus lease. Um, I know we've talked about this extensively and obviously the, the preference, I know my preference has always been lease, but why, why a sale, not a lease in this case?
My understanding from legal, and I might spin it back to Attorney Jones or actually Attorney, um, Elizabeth Hall is also on the line. The lease restriction is anything below, it's like four years and 11 months is what we are able to lease it. So any long-term projects on the site would have to go through this process for the sale of the property, um, you know, especially for the scale of a project. My understanding is that that is the avenue of why we cannot just do a lease on the property.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, as far as the, the transit oriented amenities and designs, are those, those will be discussed during the entitlement process?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, the other question is on the, uh, again, the access for, uh, disabled, uh, and, and mobily challenged, uh, individuals. Is that something we can accommodate also and look into during the entitlement, entitlement process into the designs? Because I think there is a valid point there that to make to, it's not just A D I, ADA compliance, but there may be more factors that, that could be looked into.
Yeah, we can go into specificity during the entitlement process. We can go through a development agreement to sort of specify, um, anything above and beyond what maybe zoning calls for or code calls for. So that's certainly an avenue we can move forward with. Um, I think we need to better understand, not only on, on the infrastructure piece and making sure that ADA complacency is there, but also for the units, what that means, how many units, all of that, we need to still decide, um, to do the breakdown once the percentage is sort of set.
Right. Um, and forgive me, I've got a couple more questions.
Please, go ahead.
The, um, I know there's, um, with developments, there's always, especially housing developments, there's always impact fees. Is the, have we calculated what, let's say the, the park dwelling fees here are and how they would be, um, what, what the, uh, what they would be used for, um, or how they be dispersed?
No, the only financial analysis related to this was the hotel analysis in terms of the revenue generated from that. Um, and the developer sort of spoke to that roughly around 800,000, anywhere from 600 to 800,000 dollars for, um, you know, T O T fees, but we have not done the park analysis. We would do that during our internal review.
Okay. But there is, so, so there is additional revenue that is going to come in for the city through fees and park, uh, park fees and other impact fees, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm going to bump it over to, um... Just for the, the council, as a reminder, that our park dwelling fees are set at 12,020 per unit.
12,020 per unit?
Correct. So if we're looking at 140 units for this project, that's roughly 1.7 million.
So there's an additional 1.7 million that we can account for that goes towards parks?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's also additional impact fees that go towards mitigating certain issues like traffic and, uh, and other things, correct?
Yes. So, you know, infrastructure, pretty much all of our, any new development, we actually look at the, uh, needs on an infrastructure level, but also, you know, if you were to look at the Fullerton Transit Center Plan, I understand it's been a really long time in terms of, uh, the effectiveness of implementation. There's also, someone alluded to it, but on the northwest corner of Santa Fe and Pomona is slated for really a plaza, open space. And in order for us to really implement that, we're going to need to use new development to be able to play for portions of that. And so I would, I would anticipate, um, that we would try to get some sort of, um, fees or payment in lieu so that we're able to execute that, um, as part of sort of a nexus for this project.
Uh, now I know we, for, for folks who may be watching, we, we are discussing also our housing element. Uh, it's still in, in the process in which we are looking to accommodate new, um, housing, uh, based on our, our needs assessment that came, uh, from the state. Does this apply to these units? Would they apply towards those, uh, to that housing element number?
Yes, they would.
They would. Okay. And I encourage folks to watch it because for those who are advocating for affordable housing, that is really where the, the whole city is going to be looked at, so is essential. Uh, thank you. Um, I, I don't have any, um, yeah, actually, sorry, I do have one more question on the, um, affordable, the proposal for a 12%. the proposal for a 12%. That was, it's, it's not in this, but agreement that is just a, a proposal that would have been discussed later, but can we make it part of this as a minimum requirement of 12% with potentially maybe studying for more?
The council can direct staff to amend the DDA as a requirement as part of the sale. So it could either be a specific percentage, it could be a range, so that way they provide some flexibility in terms of the project to understand the economics of it. But it's, it's up to the council and you can use that as part of the disposition.
Okay. I have no, no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Proton, any questions, sir? All right, very well. Councilmember Dunlap, any questions?
None.
I've got one question before we close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and that is the 150 public parking spaces that are being eliminated, how is that being addressed?
So roughly, I believe it's 164 public spaces. In their proposal, it'll be required to have public parking in the ground floor of their building. We would work through to understand wayfinding, what that programming would look like, if it's 24 hours. We would, we would do that during their submittal process. But there is a requirement per, just sort of our intent as well as the ENA to preserve that.
Understood. Thank you, Director Thomas. Heavy lift. Thank you for getting across the finish line. I didn't even think I'd get here. That said, we'll close the public.
We're going to close the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Two points. I do not know if you want to hear, our, our secret consultant is present. You may want to hear her comments regarding some of the comments relative to the MND to further inform you. And then secondly, Ms. Hull apparently is on the line, attorney who's handled this matter. We might want to ask her if she has any legal issues that she needs to raise as part of this process.
Well, we're paying them for their time, so let's get their opinion.
Yeah.
Alia is on Zoom. Alia, if you can unmute yourself. Alia, you should be able to speak now.
Um, all right. Good evening. My name is Alia Hokoki, and I'm a Senior Environmental Project Manager with SOMAS. As the project manager for this project and the initial study MND, I can confidently say that preparation of the ISMND has been in accordance with SEQA and state SEQA guidelines. The process, of course, started with preparation of an IS or initial study to determine what kind of SEQA document would be required for this project. During that process and based on technical analyses conducted, we determined that the impacts are either less than significant or significant but medicable. So for that reason, preparation of an MND was deemed appropriate. Now, as a conservative approach, we prepared this document as a project-specific standalone full ISMND to analyze the impacts of the Parkwest project. The purpose of an MND is not to just serve as a SEQA document for a previously prepared environmental document. It can be a standalone project-specific SEQA document prepared to disclose the potentially significant impacts of a project. So for that reason, to make this a standalone project or ISMND, we provided a summary of the environmental analyses in the previous document. And for information purposes, we included all the project mitigation measures, project design features and conditions of approval. Now, in terms of including all the mitigation measures from the previous document for the project, I should say that there needs to be a nexus between an impact and a mitigation. If our analyses concluded that no significant impact would result, there is truly no need for a mitigation. In few instances where, where we concluded a potential impact may result, we referenced a few mitigation measures in the previous EIR document for the specific plan. Now, regarding any particular comments, and especially in terms of air quality, as I heard a number of comments, our technical expert is on the line and he'll be more than happy to provide a summary of potential impacts and how the conclusions were made. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to hear from the, the attorney of record.
Elizabeth, you should be able to unmute.
Excellent. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. I apologize, I've been in another city council meeting, so I had joined your meeting quite late, just at the end of the public comments. But there are a few things that I heard while I was on the line that I did want to address. First, there was an assertion that because the MND did not disclose the exact discretionary actions that will be needed for this project, that it is somehow flawed. We would disagree with that. It is not required for the initial study and MND to specifically call out the entitlements that will be needed. Here, you're going to approve the DDA and then you will, in the future, approve or consider the entitlements at that time if we were to find that the existing MND that you have approved this evening did not address all of the project impacts based upon the entitlements that are coming forward, additional environmental review would occur at that point. So there's nothing about the fact that these discretionary approvals are not called out tonight that would invalidate or, or make this MND not appropriate to proceed with. For purposes of tonight's action, you're looking at a disposition and development agreement. There has been an issue raised, I saw a letter that was submitted sometime today regarding a protest on the ground that housing is the appropriate use for this site. That is a policy decision for this council to make. As a mixed-use project, it does address housing. You have the ability to make the determination that the economic development aspects of this project and the housing that will be provided are clearly for the public interest and satisfy the need, the requirements within the government code section to overrule that protest. Additionally, I'm available to answer any questions you may have. I apologize again that I was not available to hear all public comment and respond to anything that was said previously.
So I, I did have a question, that's Jermaine, while, while we have you. So are you then saying that none of the protests that we heard, and I've heard the word protest a few times this evening, notwithstanding the, the letter we received, are all of them, you find them baseless? Are we not acting on that?
Again, I apologize. I didn't hear your public comments, so I don't know what other issues were raised. I'd have to defer to Mr. Jones on that at this point. I did see the letter that was submitted just before the meeting, but again, I joined just as your public comment was ending, so I can't really speak to what other protests were raised besides the ones that I, I've already referred to that I heard.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Silva, please.
Yeah, so on, on the protest regarding housing, so you're saying you feel we, we're on, we're on the, the correct side of that, that we, we have been able, based on the, on the apartments being developed, the housing, that we have addressed that protest? Is, is that what you're saying, that, that, that we have enough to overrule that?
Yes, I would certainly say that you could find, based upon the fact that economic development is an appropriate use of your local police power and within your purview, and this is an economic development project, you would also be, you know, redeveloping a blighted area and, and providing housing. All of those are things that would fall within the public convenience and interest referenced in your resolution and would certainly give you the ability to overrule that protest that this site should be used for housing. No one is denying that housing is an important issue facing the state of California, but so is the elimination of light, so is the redevelopment of sites, so is economic development, so are all of the many issues that were going to be addressed by this project for your community.
Okay. So follow-up question, I guess, so how do we go about overruling so that we get away from the supermajority and bring it back to a simple majority vote?
So you overrule by having a supermajority. That's what the statute sets forth.
Say again?
To overrule the protest, the statute requires a four-fifths majority. So your motion would be, as provided in your resolution, that based upon the evidence before you and the things that you find, the economic development benefits to this project, the housing that's being created, the elimination of blight that may be addressed by this, and the other benefits to this project, through a four-fifths vote, you find that you overrule the protest and move forward with the project.
And I appreciate Councilmember Silva clarifying that. I, I was wondering that myself. That was going to be my next question.
So, so just for clarification, so let's say we take that vote and there is a supermajority, do we then have to vote again to move forward with the project?
As it's presented in your resolution before you this evening, one four-fifths vote would overrule the protest and approve the project.
So we're still on the supermajority, no matter what?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions from councilmembers of our attorney? If not, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. We'll go left, left to right or right to left, who's, who's ready? Councilmember Zara, please.
I do want to just clarify, actually, before I make comments. So now, we are required a four-fifths vote. Okay. Correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, based upon Mrs. Hull's comments.
And the other, on the notification, we don't need to re-notify this, right?
We, by case law, we do not believe, we believe there's been substantial compliance. You obviously have the ability this evening to continue this matter to the 20th of the month and re-notice it, but based upon case law, we believe that substantial compliance with the notice requirement has been met.
Would there, if we don't continue the item, let's say, would that potentially create a challenge? Could there potentially be somebody challenging us legally?
Sure. Somebody could bring a redaction.
Right. So I, I don't know about the council, but do you think that maybe continuing would be a wiser decision?
Oh, I think you can certainly make that motion accordingly, sir. I'm always big on being on the side of caution, err on the side, so.
Well, if I'm, Zara, are you done?
You, you, yeah.
Well, I, I would just say, just given that there was a comment about rushing or ramming this project, there has been four and a half years. We, we here at Fullerton seem, and, and, yeah, we, we seem to take long in developing projects. You know, I've, I lived here about 30 years and we're still trying to figure out the Fox. We're still trying to figure out Coyote Hills. We're still trying to develop here and there. So I, I think this project moving forward could really provide some, some, another revenue source. It could provide a, be a catalyst for that, for that intersection. And I'm, I am keeping in mind that we do not, we do not want to impact those two businesses right there that are adjacent, so I think we can figure out a way how to, how to do that. And, and if our attorney feels that we are addressing the protest about the housing issue, I would say, given the benefits that we talked about, given, you know, just the, the process that we've, the, the time that we've taken to get here, and we've got to remember prior to this, that land, we had an ENA for Mayor Proton, what was it, 12 years or, or 14 years? I mean, right? It's been sitting there. And it might sit there another year, two, three, four, empty, not generating any sort of economic stimulus. So with that, I, I like to, you know, move the item, but with the added conditions that we do include that we have at least 12% affordable housing in the project and that we do emphasize local hires for the construction of that. And, and if we can do that, I would gladly adopt the resolution and move the item.
All right, sir. Very well. Councilmember Zara.
Yeah, just to, again, follow up, there's all these little technical things that, and sorry if I'm getting in the weeds of it, but if we do, if this is continued, let's say, would it still require four-fifths vote? And would the, would we have to open a public hearing? How, how would that work on a public hearing?
Well, I'll defer to Ms. Hull, but I, the answer is, it's still, well, I should let her, let her answer.
Okay. Is she available to answer that question?
Yes, thank you. I just unmuted. So as I understand the question, if you continue it, yes, I think you would continue it and open the public hearing again to take additional public comment. Anyone who has spoken at tonight's hearing during public comment, you would not have to allow to speak again. It would only be new speakers who didn't have the benefit of the previous discussion, unless there are substantial changes to the item.
I think the question that the council member asked was, does it still require the four, four-fifths vote?
Yes, we would need, either way, at some point, you need to overrule the protest by a four-fifths vote.
Understood. Now, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Zara, anything further, sir?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dunlap.
You know, I, I do want to clarify, as to Councilmember Silva's point, yeah, the, the four-year delay here was not at all caused by the city. I mean, the city's not been an impediment in this process. And I think it's been the applicant's own inability to act and to, you know, to submit and to, to get in front of this body with, you know, with plans. And they've gotten extensions, they've asked for, you know, I think multiple extensions in this case, and they've always been granted. So I find it interesting that now somehow at the 25th hour, you know, there's this pressure applied to us as though we've got to approve it because if not, we're somehow doing the community a disservice. You know, when in reality, then we get into these situations historically because, you know, ENAs are given without an adequate RFP process, you know? Had there been adequate competition, I think, for the site in the first place, we would have been able to vet multiple proposals that would likely have better served the community. Make no mistake, I support development here, I support whatever the free market will bring to this site, whether that's affordable housing, whether that's market rate housing, whether that's a hotel or commercial, or some sort of hybrid blend of, of all of the above. But I, I think the community is better served when there's competition for those sites. Having said that, you know, the position that we find ourselves in tonight with what appears to be an incomplete developer agreement that's missing really, I think, important verbiage with respect to, you know, how the parking is going to be handled, specifically the public parking, and also the fact, and one of the things that I found most frustrating because there are multiple businesses that are going to be affected by this and not just the, you know, the two or three that are here this evening, you know, the fact that really had to beg and, and try to kind of do my own research to find out just what the setbacks will be of this potential site as, or this potential development as it relates to the existing structures around it. And so my concerns are that, hey, with, I think somebody was talking about three to six feet in one area, I know it's going to be about 12 feet from the, you know, within 12 feet of the loading dock at this, you know, train station area. So that's not, that's not, I think, the way that we set either of these potential developments up for, you know, for success. And it's definitely not the way that we handle our existing tenants and property owners. So I would support a continuance this evening. And again, I, I do want to clarify, we actually do have control. Yes, it's unfortunate if this, because, because of the way this was handled from the very beginning, had we been able to, I think, put out an RFP and get had we been able to, I think, put out an RFP and get somebody in there that was able to deliver on this, this would be a non-issue right now, we wouldn't be discussing this because it would probably already be under construction. But because we're in the position that we're in, and because we have to designate, this would be designated surplus land, you know, the reality is, it would go out to an RFP, and there would be, what, a 20 to 25% requirement for affordable housing, but there could still be multiple uses existing at that site, and again, I think we might be able to find something that would better serve the community at that point, but until we can get some of the other items wrapped up, notably the parking requirements and some of the other setbacks and such, I'd support continuing this item.
Very well, sir. Mr. Mayor Proton, and then councilmember.
Yeah, I still believe that this location, that corridor, east and west, should be reserved primarily for a commercial activity. This would be a very compatible commercial activity, it would bring numerous benefits, the TOT tax would be substantial benefit to the city, it provides many housing units, it was mentioned that the park dwelling fees, there are a number of other pluses to this project. There would be some obstacles to putting out, you know, an RFP to try to find other interested parties, particularly with the current economic climate. So I know there are many councilmembers up here that at times really stress economic development, economic development. Well, here is something that's really tailor-made in that location for creating benefits on a number of fronts. So for that reason, I've always leaned in favor of this project. I understand there are some details to be worked out, but we still control all those details going forward. So I see very little risk in supporting this project, and I would urge councilmembers to understand that we have great demands on the city's finances that we're not moving to meet at all at the moment. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Zara, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I think Nathan mentioned, there's pros and cons, there's pros and cons to every project, and you've got to outweigh, you know, see what weighs better for the community in general, and I think there's a lot of benefits here from bringing in much-needed revenue that we can support our city. It's not just the city making money, it's about also paying for our employees and filling in vacancies and making sure that we're paving our roads and making sure that we're maintaining our parks, all of that costs money and we need that. So there is this really major benefit there, there's also the economic activity that will bring in to a lot of the local businesses, you know, people coming in from, from the visitors coming in, tourists and other people who are stopping by and for the night, maybe on their way to somewhere else, taking the train, will stop by, maybe shop at a local store, pick up an antique maybe, or something. So there is all these benefits that will happen and it's definitely needed, and I think I am one of those councilmembers that talk about economic development quite a bit, I've been talking about it for a long time because we need revenue for our city. There is benefit from creating jobs and there are, and I know we all pushed for housing, and I do appreciate that the developer added this component which wasn't there in the beginning, and now we have the opportunity to also create housing that will add to our arena numbers. Is it perfect? I don't think anything is perfect. Can we find some ways to bring some benefit to as many people as possible? I think that's where I kind of look at it, and how do we create these win-wins? If we can mitigate some factors and help the businesses minimize the impact on them during the construction and find those ways, that would be something we would need to look at seriously, and I'm sure we can do that. How do we also make sure that we are creating enough and adequate percentage of affordable units that would allow for us to add those to arena numbers and provide those? So those are all things. I'm concerned about, I am concerned about the technicality of it, I'm always worried about getting sued, and I know this is an issue that could potentially, so I'm a little torn between taking a vote now and then, and I don't know if the votes are in for this, it requires four votes, or whether maybe giving it another chance at another meeting where there might be a new council seated, at least one more member would be involved, and then taking a look at it with a fresh pair of eyes there, and making sure that we are doing things where there's no doubt on the process. I'm a little worried about that. So I would be leaning towards continuing right now, and I wouldn't mind doing that because I don't know where the, I mean, I don't think there is three votes here anyway, so.
All right, sir. You know, there are risks to making decisions quickly. Again, Councilmember Dunlap was apt to point out that the extension of time and the body of research that was done was not at risk of staff or this council, the onus really was on the recipient of the exclusive negotiation agreement, and until about five months ago, this was a hotel exclusively, and that has changed now. And I look at the public benefit and for what this land is worth, based on the fact that we have such a scarce amount of it, and if we're going to use a comparable in Anaheim, not necessarily known these days for being honest with public land sales, they didn't even have an acre of land that sold for 1.9 million last year. City of Santa Ana had two acres sell for 6.7. Now, I realize that there are some negative mitigating factors with the soil associated with this property, but even with that, our appraisal goes in at 2.3, we're being offered 1.4. I'm curious where we're going to come up with a million dollars. Yes, there are benefits to TOT tax, yes, there are benefits to the additional revenue, this could be a project that brings in, but these are all could-be's, and I often wonder what is certain. So I do, I am concerned that when we talk about pollution, when we talk about environmental impacts, we have to talk about vehicle miles traveled, it's often a tax to our environment and our citizens and the lowest income in the most marginalized places in our city that have to breathe this pollution in. So this land, associated directly next to this transportation center, is a valuable commodity, and I don't know that we should so easily be the move to sell it so quickly. Without a public benefit, as in affordable housing, based on the numbers that exist right now, we're going to get about 20 affordable units at best with this current project. If we had something different, perhaps we'd get 70. That, to me, is a real impact to our community. So I am certainly in favor of continuing this, if that is the body's will, but I cannot support and have not supported this project. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so with that, I mean, so I hear you, you're very in favor of some sort of affordable housing, which, you know, I think that that's one thing that I've been big in favor of, so moving forward, in order to meet that requirement, would you be willing to bring forward a inclusionary ordinance so we can make sure we have affordable housing on every development that we have?
Well, we've talked about this before during our housing study session, and I'm happy to have it, you know, looked at and take a look at all things, sir.
But would you be supportive of it? I mean, there's one thing that I look at it and do it, it's.
You're going to put me on the spot of basically asking you to support something that's pie in the sky, my answer is maybe. How's that answer?
No, no, well, I would just.
I don't understand your question, sir. We asked for this to be brought back, I agreed with you that it should be brought in terms of the inclusionary housing element, hasn't been done yet, so you're asking me to support something we haven't even looked at.
No, because, so I was just taking that cue because I think it sounded like you were very much adamant about having more affordability on that type of lot.
I think when it comes to Surplus Land Act and city-owned land, I am absolutely in favor of that.
All right, very good, and hopefully it'll come back. Well, well, it's the constituent champion belt, we have a lot of different constituents, as I've said this before, where I worked at, every year I'd get a few parents coming to me and saying, is there any affordable housing available? And living, and working down in the South part of Fullerton, there's a big need for that. So, yeah, I am a big advocate, and I'm not going to shy away from helping our constituents who don't live up the hill, who are less fortunate, and I'll never back away from that, and I'll push to it, you know? This is my last meeting, so I was trying to get something on. So, yeah, I mean, you all can make fun of it and tease it and give me a belt, but hey, put up, where's the belt? I haven't seen it yet. Dunlap, you've been talking about it for two months, so maybe next Tuesday you'll bring the belt.
We'll commission the sanctioning bodies to get the housing champion belt.
All right, let's do it.
Call the WBA and WBC, please.
We're still having a discussion.
All right, so with that, I think we're, it's not continued, but with that, I would like to thank everyone out there and the supporters and non-supporters, and hopefully I have been able to bring a different voice to the council, I served for six years and.
Sir, we're still in the public hearing.
Well, you know, it's okay, I'll make my comments now, and so, but anyway, just thank everyone, and I think this is going to be done, we've got one more item here that should go quickly, and again, it's been a pleasure serving the community here for six years.
All right, Mr. Mayor Proton, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, you mentioned the deficiency in the selling price, and I understand that, but I would note that just two years of TOT tax would erase that differential from the comps that you mentioned.
Yes, I did recognize that, sir.
And the second thing is, as to the matter of a continuance, it would seem to me to be fruitless to create a continuance.
So if there's a second to the councilman's motion, then we'll go ahead and call the question. Very well.
I'll second the continuing.
And that motion specifically.
Well, it wasn't to continue it, the councilmember made a motion to go with staff recommendations and approve the project. Is that not correct, Councilmember Silva?
And include at least 12% affordability and local hiring in that.
Yes, thank you. That was his motion. If there's a second to that, we'll call the question, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, taking a vote, I mean, it seems like we know where it's going to go anyway, but taking a vote on this without appropriate notice, is that, does that matter at all? Because that was, that's my concern, is there is a question on the noticing.
I'll let Ms. Holes respond further if she wants to, but let me make it clear, there's two big, two motions being discussed at the same time. One motion would be a motion to continue this public hearing to a date and time certain in the future that would continue the deliberations. The second motion, as I heard, was a motion to approve the project as submitted and recommended.
That was the first motion.
Correct.
Well, there was no motion to continue, that was offered.
Well, I'm just saying, there was a discussion, in that effect.
Understood, understood.
The motion I understand on the floor right now is the motion to approve the project as presented and as recommended.
That's correct. So if there's a second.
So would the councilman, would the councilmember Dunlap's motion be a substitute to continue?
Well, we can call the question, sir, if there's a second to Councilmember Silva, and then see the vote, and then we can take a vote on continuing the item, is that correct? Can we do both at the same time, walk and chew gum?
Yep.
All right, very good.
Again, let me, this is Mrs. Holes' matter, I don't want to interfere with her, let her give you the proper legal advice.
All right, is she available?
The only clarification I would have is if you vote on the project, I'm not sure what a continuation would do at that point.
Okay.
Because you'd either voted up or down at that point, I would think.
All right, okay, well, I suppose we don't need the attorney's advice, so.
I would make a substitute motion to continue the item.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Seeing no one responding to Councilmember Silva's original motion, we will call the question. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
And this is to continue the item to December 20th in the Fullerton City Council Chambers at 5:30 PM. Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Nay.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes port of one.
And we do have a item on consent calendar that was pulled by Councilmember Silva, it's number seven on the consent calendar.
And is the individual who requested that item here, all right.
Would you like to come to the mic and, please?
Hello, my name is Anjali Tapadia, I'm a Fullerton resident, and I'll just make it quick, I, of course, support this project, of course we need resurfacing, no question, I just thought I would take the opportunity to request or make a couple suggestions. While we are actively repairing the roads, perhaps there are a couple items we could add to this project, inexpensive things that could improve the walkability of the areas that are in question. I know these areas seem small and these improvements might seem trivial, but when we start to make these small incremental changes, I think that that can lead to upward trends that then encourage further changes to improve walkability throughout our city. So I think it's very helpful that we perhaps consider these small incremental changes at every opportunity whenever there's a repair being made. So the suggestions that I wanted to put forward for possible consideration would be, if there are bike lanes in these areas, that they be painted green. Currently, cars often veer into our bike lanes and prevent bikes from safely using them, so green paint signifies that they are for the exclusive use of bikes. Curb cuts, currently, most of our city uses just diagonal curb cuts, which are dangerous, they shove pedestrians, wheelchair users, stroller users, et cetera, directly into traffic, so perpendicular curb cuts are much more helpful. They cost a little bit more, but not a whole lot, but they do encourage more, encourage safer crossings, or even if you want to get really pro pedestrian about it, you could do a full curb cut that encompasses the full 90 degree of the corner, and that's incredibly helpful, and also just make sure that those curb cuts are completely flush, that helps prevent accidents and trips. And, oh, bike crossings, if we could please consider making any signalized intersections where these repairs are being made bike-sensitive, it's really impractical to ask bicyclists to cross lanes of traffic in order to push a beg button, I've almost gotten hit by cars that way, and so making, it's very, very easy to change the sensors and the calibration to respond to bicyclists so that the signals change without there having to be a car present at that intersection. Some, excuse me, some additional things that maybe are a step up in terms of cost but aren't that much more are, you know, protected bike lanes, of course, I know these are residential areas, so the speed limits are low, protected bike lanes might not be a necessity, but if there are any opportunities, that would be wonderful. And then, of course, widening sidewalks, currently in Fullerton sidewalks are sort of a dumping ground for utility poles and everything, and that really narrows the sidewalks and kind of makes them an obstacle course. So widening sidewalks encourages walkability, keeping sidewalks separate from driveways so that pedestrians don't have to go up and down as they cross over driveways. I think improving the walkability of our city will help with traffic, which is important. Thank you.
Thank you. And please consider applying for the.
Mayor Jung, I have applied and I've spoken to you, and I've spoken with Senator Newman.
Awesome.
And who has communicated with you about my application.
He has, he has, indeed.
And I know that another member was already appointed to active transport, but yes, I have been making a concerted effort to get on that committee, so I would appreciate any nomination if the council does feel that that would be appropriate.
That's terrific. If staffs heard those suggestions, yes, go ahead, sir. So if there's a motion from council, the.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what did you mention about the suggestions? I just.
Heard the suggestions.
Oh, okay, all right, well, I would like to ask, how many of these, on this project, how many of these streets have bike lanes already that we would maybe consider doing green?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to interject one thing, so this is an award of contract that's already been bid out, any direction that you give, I don't believe you could give any direction to add those improvements, you could give direction to have the staff look at those for a change order, I believe, but you would not be able to add those into the action tonight only as a consideration for a future change order.
Understood. Well, we're going to get some new folks on that committee, I'm sure, and they can advocate accordingly.
And if I may, just.
Of course.
Please send, if you could send us an email with some of these details, I mean, I know you ran through them quickly, so I didn't, some of them were great, and I'd love to hear those ideas in detail, so please send us an email, we'll forward it to staff so they can look at it for the future.
Thank you, I've actually sent a couple of emails regarding just general considerations, but I'll be certain to send an email to council regarding these specific.
Yeah, these specific items, thank you.
So how many of these streets have bike lanes already?
I believe only one, I believe Rolling Hills Drive was the only one currently with existing bike lanes.
Okay, and so, curb cuts, so I would like to look to see what would. Okay, and so curb cuts, so, so I would like to look to see what would it cost for a change order to paint them green? That shouldn't be too much. And then, yeah, on the curb cuts, because I have, when I've been walking with the dog and a few other people, when they're, when they are, those curb cuts are diagonal, you kind of do go right into the street. And having a 90 degree, which I've seen some, I think somewhere in Fullerton, I will, that would be something that I think we might consider looking at, because it would be a little safer. And having them flush, I know Marina's come here, and she hates the curb cuts and the bubbles we put on them, because it, and this would be, I think, another. So I, I mean, I don't know if we'd do that, but I maybe come back with a change order, see what it would take, and if it's not too much, maybe consider those for the, for the streets that would, I guess, benefit more from them.
Well, if I can, if I can ask staff, would that potentially increase the cost of the bid, since we're now delaying and, you know, inflation the way it is? Is that possible that it now will end up costing more?
Any change to the, to the bid documents will be an increased cost. That's, contractors use that to their advantage for change orders. But just, just to let you know that, we looked, everything you said, I totally understand. I used to be a private consultant in my previous life, and I designed countless active transportation facilities, included protected bikeways, perpendicular curb ramps, you know, all of that good stuff. The green paint, yes, it is an inexpensive treatment. However, it is maintenance-intensive. So that's something that we could look at applying, but that would be a policy and practice decision, more of a practice decision, we'd have to make internally, because if we did it one place, we should be implementing it all bike lanes moving forward. And it's not always one size fits all, especially with curb ramps and bike facilities. It depends on rideaway constraints, parking, and other things. So we do, whenever we do any type of improvements to our roadways, we do look at our bike master plan, to see what type of bike facility was proposed. We see if it's feasible to implement that, as well as make any improvements to our sidewalks and our curb ramps.
So, and, okay, so I guess we're not going to get there, but one last question. So I guess, is cost the main factor when we consider diagonal cuts or perpendicular cuts?
No, no, not at all. Existing constraints is a big one, because when you do perpendicular cuts, you could either go around the whole curb turn, like was suggested. However, that doesn't really delineate or, or channel anyone in the right direction. So in order to do that, you almost create a raised curb triangle piece between the two ramps.
Yeah.
And that could be considered a tripping hazard. So you have to really, like, weigh the pros and cons, and it depends on the location, and it depends on existing constraints.
All right.
So there's a lot of factors involved.
All right. And we'll, given that, I guess I'll move the item.
I'll second. Do we have all public comments?
Well, that's right.
Any comments on Zoom? All right, very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
You tell me again who did the second.
I did.
Thank you. I didn't write it down completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Before we close the meeting, I did want to give our departing councilmember, who has served diligently on council, representing the city of Fullerton, an opportunity to speak. I know we get this opportunity on the 13th, but it is important to me on his last meeting to make sure he gets some recognition.
Well, I did already, and then we'll have a little more on the 13. Thank you.
You bet, sir. All right. Next meeting is, for us, a special meeting on the 13th. Same bat time, same bat channel, folks. Good night.